Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, so. I have called the meeting to a halt. This is the September eighteenth, twenty twenty four Menden's Lightword meeting. We've already done, as we believe, so I will skip that part and we'll just say again for the record that this meeting is being recorded. So thank you all for joining us. I will also say that that we have a new microphone setup, so please do let us know, those of you who are joining remotely, please let us know if you're not able to hear. Apparently, we were not able to hear before because it's muted. So now, we hope that everyone's able to hear. All right, so our first item, number two, is someone's statements and petitions. All right, I don't see anyone in the room and I don't see any hands online. But please, if people notice any hands online, do let me know if I don't notice. All right, next up, item three is the approval of the meeting minutes for bodies twenty first, twenty twenty four. Did everyone have a chance to look at those minutes? So I need looking for a.
So it's along with the change of patient.
What was it? Okay. Oh, was it the one? Okay, yes. So.
So I made a motion to approve the meeting minutes, numbers twenty first, twenty four.
There, there's an amendment to the.
Oh, we can approve amendment. Did you amend it? Right?
So, okay, so there was a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion or discussion. I know I noticed that there was a typo in item eleven of the appointments that just a name got crossed and it says. Those who understand the appointment to Deborah Hutter instead of Deborah Rowe.
Yeah, certainly. We'll amend that. So pass an amendment, it will be amended.
So were there any other, any other suggested amendments, any further discussion? Do we need to amend the motion?
You can pass, you said, ask them to.
Yeah.
As a minute. Okay, all right. So all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And we have everyone here in the groups could not be to do a roll. All right, so next up, we have circulation of meeting minutes for review or approval of a future meeting. So hopefully, the board will have a chance to read and review those minutes. And can you remind us what the best process is for, if we notice any typos or other errors?
Yep, some of you have already sent them in, so send the best to Katie. She'll incorporate them. And then at our next meeting, October second, all of these minutes listed there will be listed for approval at that time. So the movement will be amended because as their presence.
Great, great, thank you. Great, we have actually should be skipped to the hearing since it's six thirty five. Okay, so now we're going to jump to item six and we'll go back to item five. So the continuation of the public hearing, which is scheduled for six thirty five, to consider the request of massive pieces of liquor company, N B A, National Grid and Verizon, who we named both eight poles, wires and fixtures. Number three oh eight, three six, three four two.
And we'll do all of the six thirty five P M public hearing, people, the location number three oh eight, three six, three four two, seven.
Need to answer.
Do we need to open? I thought we was all just continue.
Yeah, I don't know if there needs to be a motion to continue.
And we continued it, so we never closed it. Actually, we don't really need to open. We just need to. Need to continue. I'm not even sure we even need. I think just a pardon would be.
If not.
Motion.
I think. So then, acknowledge it and so then we jump right into the hearing. Okay, so I believe that we have some guests here to help talk us through this. Jeremy, are you, can we have your.
Yeah, so this is a poll hearing relocation relative to the intersection of the industry of Hartford Avenue East, which runs into agenda item number seven. So we won't be talking about agenda number seven right now. But I think we previously had spoken to a National Grid representative who didn't fully assuage the concerns of citizens and, and the board. So if you'd like to come up to hold relocation. Can we bring out with that? If you can introduce yourself.
Sure, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is William Buckley and I am a project director for G F I Partners and we're here tonight on behalf of Hope Dale Industrial J V L L C, which is the developer of the project at seventy five Plain Street. I'm joined tonight by our superintendent of construction, William Hamill, and we're here tonight to address any concerns the board has. We're, I don't want to say we're experts in the pole relocation piece of this. I did go back and watch, I was unaware that that the hearings had, had started. So I went back and watched the public hearing so I could get a feel for what some of the board's questions were, as well as an understanding of what National Grid was proposing here. So I understand the board's concerns. I did, it didn't seem like you were getting appropriate answers from National Grid on that. I will, I'll tell you what, what, from our perspective as the developers of, of that project, and as we move to the next agenda item, we agreed, we have agreed to make it a significant intersection improvement at the intersection of Plain Street and Hartford Ave East. In order to do that, there is some widening of the roadway within the existing right of way on both, on the Menden side of Hartford Ave East, as well as the Hope Dale side of Hartford Ave East, as well as along at the end of Plain Street in Hope Dale. There's a total of six, what I understand is joint owned telephone poles, that four on the Menden side, and I believe two of them are on Plain Street. Those poles are being shifted approximately anywhere from, depending on, on the specific location, it could be anywhere from five to ten feet within the existing right of way to allow for the improvement project at the intersection. So I, it's my understanding that, that National Grid needed to petition the town in order to locate, to relocate those poles within the existing right of way. That's what they did earlier this year, which triggered your, your, your public hearing. The cost of the relocation of those poles, if, if we're able to move forward and improve the intersection, the cost of the relocation of those poles is borne by us as the, as the developer and as the, as the contractor improving the intersection. And you know, again, the, the purpose is to, to, to allow the, the widening of, of the paved area. You know, based upon the approved plans that have been peer reviewed by Town Amendment's peer review can, traffic peer review consultant, as well as Town of Hope Dale's jointly by a peer review consultant on behalf of the Town Amendment and the Town of Hope Dale.
Chair, I can just, part of the, part of the, part of what's circulated to this was the understanding of the, of the statement that our planning board, what they, as far as we know, they've never been consulted. A planning board has not reviewed this. And further, the entire entirety of that is in the town event. And, you know, Plain Street is certainly in order.
Yep.
The town lines act determines the Plain Street.
Agreed.
So I'm not sure, I mean, I'm glad that it's to be improved and I think everybody agrees with it.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure.
Well, I could take, if I, could I address that through you, Madam Chair? We, we, you know, as far back as twenty twenty one, shared conceptual plans with the Town of Menden, with the Highway Surveyor at that time. That was during our planning board process with the Town of Hope Dale. At that time, it was our understanding that really nothing more than a street opening permit was going to be required for this, for this intersection work. We are not, we are working within the existing right of way, so there is no expansion of the existing right of way. It's all within, it's within the town owned road, the town owned right of way. We, I, and so I'll fast forward a little bit. So we get the Town of Hope Dale approval for site plan approval and is in, back in July of twenty twenty three, so more than a year ago now, we shared a copy of the plans with the Menden Planning Department and the Planning Director. Jack Hunter, yeah. And then Jack actually attended meetings. We had planning and design meetings with M D M. So Jack asked for, Jack asked for, for us as the, to improve the intersection, if we would pay for a peer review on behalf of the Town Amendment. We agreed to do so. There were planning and design meetings with M D M and with the Menden Planning Department, the Planning Director. As far back as, you know, as far back as a year ago, I think our first meeting, first meeting might have been September or October.
And I don't even know.
Well, I.
I don't know if the planning board asked it. Talked to the planning board chair. Said that as far as he knows, nothing was presented to him. So that's why I asked that.
Yeah, so I, you know, we were under the impression that providing it to the Planning Director, that in essence is, is, is sharing it with the, with the board as well. From, from my past experience, and I have twenty years of experience in municipal government as well, so I, I share your concerns and I understand, you know, the role that you play in the process here. I, I, I was not, I'm not sure where the planning board has jurisdiction here. Now, that does, that's not.
Changed their vote and no longer require.
I could, I can address that as well, if you'd like. So the improvement to the intersection was a condition of our, of our project, to complete that intersection. It was clear that the Town Amendment was, well, wasn't clear. We were having, our, our, our permit, our street opening permit, which we applied for, I think in April or May of this, earlier this year, it was clear that that permit was being delayed for what, for whatever reasons. Yeah, well, hopefully, I'm providing satisfactory answers because we, we're just, we've, we've been following the process as it's, you know, we reached out and we're, we asked for assistance and we're, you know, we, we followed the, the guidance and instructions that we were, that we were provided. We went back to the, to the Hope Dale Planning Board and had the, had the, the condition modified that we're only required to do that intersection if as and when the Town Amendment issues our street opening permit. If the Town Amendment does not issue a street opening permit, we, the intersection will not get signalized.
My understanding is that the D O T was requiring that as part of the impact of the traffic up at, up at Route one forty in Hartford Ave.
As far as, I never had any conversations with D O T. D O T is, it's not, it's not within, it's not a state owned roadway, so it's all under local jurisdiction. So we were never asked to do any additional work. We did, as part of our traffic impact and access study, that was also peer reviewed by M D M. We did conduct an analysis of the, is it Cape Road and Hartford Ave East and South Main? Is that right?
Route one forty.
Route one forty. So there, that, that intersection was included in our traffic impact analysis, which was peer reviewed by, by M D M at the time on behalf of the Town of Hope Dale, but also, you know, it was, it was a peer reviewed intersection. They were also the Town of Menden's.
Did the review agree with the idea that then you'd be signalized at Plain Street and Hartford Ave?
There was one movement in particular that met the signal, signal warrant, but yes, that traffic impact and access study you know, identified that intersection improvement as a, as a, as an offsite improvement that.
Necessary.
Yes, necessary, yeah.
Necessary. Hope Dale has removed that condition.
Right.
Even though they said it's necessary, even though the study said it's necessary, Hope Dale's removed it now. Right?
That condition has been removed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if.
So we, we offered that. Yep.
Then you will improve the intersection.
Correct.
But, I mean, the, the condition's been modified to add that the condition number forty six point four, which is the intersection improvements, the Town of Hope Dale holds a bond of half a million dollars from the contractor, and that intersection improvement seemed to happen within two years following the issuance of the occupancy permit. So do you have your occupancy?
No.
Do you anticipate that being short, shortly?
Yes.
So within two years of when that date is, if the intersection is not improved, is the streets, right? If the street opening permit is not granted by the Town Amendment, then that five hundred thousand dollar bond is released and they are no longer under the obligation to.
What I, what I don't understand is the bond is for the intersection, but the majority of the intersection is abandoned. So can they have a bond for property that they don't own that's not in their, within their town? I mean, it's.
The bond is being held by the Town of Hope Dale. We would make improvements on the Hope Dale side of Plain Street is what that, is what that bond would secure.
So what about the Menden's?
If Menden, if, if Menden, if. Yep.
That means that you're going to improve or impact the roadway of Menden. So shouldn't there be some type of warrants vis a vis the, the.
And I'm, I'm not. I believe your street opening permit requires a bond. I think your permit application requires a bond.
And, and I, I thought, and I understand you talked in the previous, I was like.
Right.
Now that I'm, we severe is appointed.
Yeah.
Right? And my understanding is that the planning needs to get involved in this and approve this. And I'm not suggesting that you've done anything wrong, right? Maybe Jack made a mistake or maybe he didn't, I don't know. But all I'm saying is, when we talked to National Grid, they weren't sure about it. And you're telling me that Hope Dale has removed a condition, but of course, at least half of this intersection, if not the majority of it, is actually the amended. So whatever you went through with the Hope Dale planning board, I understand that was with the property in.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not aware of the planning board having any jurisdiction in this area. So I mean, that's, that's, that's for, you know, that's not for me to decide, that's for, that's for you to decide. But, you know, our review of Menden's bylaws or regulations lays out what's, who, who to apply for, for a street opening permit, lays out what that process is.
There's a bond, bond associated.
There's a bond associated with that.
That's, you can apply for that process.
No, that would be issued with the, you know, with acceptance of the permit. I think.
It is the, it is Jack Hunter, the official planner of your plan, his opinion that this does not follow the jurisdiction of the planning. When it was made aware of it, shared the street opening application, what I imagine has been shared, the planning board, however, when I received it late last week, I, I shared it, I shared it. But it is Jack Hunter's opinion that this is a supplemental decision. Planning board is not have jurisdiction to make the, the doubt.
But it's within our, within our purview to consult.
Should the board, I should consult with whoever, but it's.
And I'm not saying that we do, we haven't discussed anything, but I'm just, I'm just trying to, to keep on because, again, you have residents come in to ask along poles, and then I had spoken with the previous, with the Hope Dale Town Administrator, who had said to me that the planning board had approved it, to verify that, not saying that they had to, that I just couldn't verify that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to catch up because I was just hearing, this, this hearing were announced on pole location. So that's separate distinct from the road permit issue. It was really two things we had to do for the broader project.
Agreed.
Potentially give you road opening permit, whatever that entails.
Yeah.
It'll be on the air and now.
Sufficient bond to ensure the bond is completed. The amount of the bond must be determined by the Highway Surveyor.
Right. And that bond is going to cover making sure of the signalization to, to all these we've been talking about is done properly, but it's inside, we care aside.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's one thing. And we remember, you're talking about that in this hearing, we can sit in this hearing.
I think we need to talk about the, the whole, can I speak any further National Grid, right? So this is about poles, which I think.
Understood. Correct, right.
I, I might suggest, if, if there's a desire for us to self plan, we could possibly able that, maybe per pro permit, permit can continue to follow our, having a discussion with the planning boards to meet, answer any questions, and then have, and move that piece forward. But that's hugely suspicious, maybe this is fantasy, but that's one thing. I'm looking at a picture of pole locations. We had some question, I sense specifications.
Specifically, the, the resident move was directly, I believe if you're on Plain Street and you're looking across, across to the.
Mr. And Mrs. Woods.
Yes, yeah, right. And they have a concern about poles and property. That, I think that's really nexus of.
Yeah.
I think they were responsible. That might seem to be, would accommodate the whole, the whole.
And that's correct. And those trees, you know, those trees are existing, at least my review of the plan is that those trees are existing trees within the existing right of way, right? So those, those trees are currently within the Town Amendment right of way for Hartford Ave East. And with the widening of the, with the additional paving and the relocation of the poles and the improvement to the intersection, those trees would be removed. There are two in particular that are being removed, because I, I, I watched the hearing and I actually have had a conversation with, let's say it's Patricia and Tom. Yeah, yeah, I've spoken to, after the hearing, yeah. They really just want to know, you know, they, they're, they, they had, the National Grid staked out those pole locations earlier this year. So I think Tom and Patricia felt like the, the project was imminent, it was going to be happening sooner. They had a row of boulders along the, the right pavement that they wanted to make sure they had time to relocate. So they've done that. So the reason they called me, they asked if I, if I, if I thought it would be okay for them to place some stakes along the roadway right now, just to prevent cars from driving onto their, onto, in, within the right of way onto their line. I said, that's really not my call, but I think you could put the stakes there. And, you know, I just explained to them that we're still in, in discussions with the Town Amendment regarding the street opening permit and that the work is contingent upon, we can't start the work until that permit happens. I also, I got, there's a sticky note right on my desk. I promised them that I would call them myself and let them know, you know, at least, at least a couple of weeks before work was to start.
You have a clarifying question. So should the board grant this full relocation?
None of that would happen until the street opening permit is granted. None of this would happen unless the project, the intersection improvements were on board. What for the intersection improvements, these pole relocations?
National Grid, it will not be, is, they're not, the, the pole locations are, are contingent upon the, pole relocations are contingent upon the intersection work happening.
This board can approve the pole relocations. And that does not, we are open on the close option, you know, potentiality from there. In fact, we not have to revisit this public hearing again. For just.
So just to clarify, to reiterate, so the board could approve the full relocation. But it is possible that if, if poles might not move if the other, if the other project doesn't go through. So, but otherwise, I think, would the idea be that we would need to keep this hearing open in an ongoing way?
We can continue it or later date. We wouldn't need to continue it at each individual meeting. You can, you know, for the next appropriate time, so long as we have that, that's more.
And so one issue is, I think, if the, the road opening is granted, should it be granted, the poles would need to be moved. So.
So we could close the hearing and make a motion to approve the, the movement of the poles pending.
That would be my suggestion.
That sounds.
Yeah, I would like to get some logistical stuff out of the way and focus on the road opening.
So I would, yeah, be open to the motion.
I move to close six forty five, six thirty five, and public hearing for pole location number three oh eight, three six, three four two, seven.
Question. Also, we'll do a roll call vote for this. Who goes on?
Sure. Hutter, aye.
Thank you. The, the public hearing is closed at six thirty eight. And so then I would entertain a motion to full location.
I make a motion to approve the low, pole location, pole relocation pending the approval of the street. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, so we'll do a roll call vote. Who goes on?
Sure. Hutter, aye.
Okay, all right, the motion to have a vote. Great, thank you all for that. Thank you for your input there.
Sure.
That's very helpful. And so now we will blow into item seven, which is the review of the road opening permit that was mentioned for Hartford Ave East. So are there, Jeremy, are there additional points to be made?
For this? Yeah. Much of the same that we just talked about here.
And can I ask, what exactly, what the, what the signal layout is going to be comprised of? Are they going to be hanging over the road on the Hope Dale side? Are they going to be on the Menden side? Are they going to be?
Both. So there's, there's a set of plans. There'll be, so there'll be mast arms, there'll be two mast arms on, on the Menden side. On the Hope Dale side, there's one mast arm that's covering both, both, both directions, right? So what's, what's going to be happening in the intersection is one of the reasons for the widening is that there'll be dedicated left turn lanes as you're heading east and west on.
Okay, the plans, the plans attached to the permit.
Which is, which is probably the biggest change that you're gonna, that you're gonna notice, is adding those, those dedicated left, left turn lanes for.
But I know that the Highway Surveyor has told me he has a concern about truck traffic, basically taking you right out of Plain Street, going on Neck Hill Road. And he had spoken to D O T about, I guess, we'll be augmenting the traffic study and talk about truck exclusion. And in order for any of that, they have, D O T have to do their own.
There, there should be a signal and traffic marking plan.
He's still waiting.
So, may I address that through you, Madam Chair? So as part of the Hope Dale, as part of the Hope Dale Planning Board. um, as part of the Hope Town Planning Board approval, um, one of the conditions that we agreed to was to prepare, um, I think they're called heavy vehicle, uh, um, heavy vehicle exclusions, right, or or truck exclusions. We agreed to provide, to prepare those applications, conduct accounts and prepare those applications for Neck Hill Road and also Newton, Mellon and Warfield Streets in, um, in the town of Hope Town. So it's my understanding Neck Hill Road is under the jurisdiction of both the town of Mendon and the town of Hope Town? Right, so, um, we agreed to prepare those, I'm just about, they're just about done. Uh, what we agreed to is prepare the applications and then provide them to the respective select so we would provide that application completed to you, it would be up to you as the select board as to whether or not you want to apply, you actually want to follow through with that application to, uh, to that, uh, ask DOT. Uh, same thing with the town of Hope Town. One of the concerns in your highway surveyor, I'm sure would share this to you, is that once you, once a a street is um, is given a heavy vehicle exclusion, it's no longer eligible for chapter ninety funding. Right, so there's, it's kind of a little give and take there. Um, um, in some communities, that means a lot, in others, it's, um, you know, the the removal of the trucks is is worth the, um, sacrifice of the chapter of the whatever whatever amount of chapter ninety funding that road, um, that road provided. Exactly, yep, exactly. And I don't know how they'd calculate that with half a road, uh, since the, since the town town road splits there. They'll figure it out, yeah. Um, so we are, um, um, I I could tell you, we're putting the finishing touches on those applications, so that was going to be a submittal that I was going to provide to Jack. Says, here is a completed heavy vehicle exclusion application. It it's yours to file. We would support the application if there are additional counts or anything necessary, but with our traffic, um, our traffic engineer has already done those counts and is providing that application.
Jeremy, did you have any discussions? On part of the panel on all of this?
Yeah, from Hope Town's point of view, uh, this is no longer a town of Hope Town issue, they have satisfied what, um, Hope Town's um requirements were, uh, they have the bond, the intersectional movements, the intersection is in Mendon, so as far as Hope Town is concerned, uh, this project is completed from their end. Um, and it's now, right, the only thing that's left is in Mendon. Um, if if nothing happens, there's nothing Hope Town can or can't do.
Except that now that they're giving this occupancy permit, those trucks are running down Plain Street and they are going to take a left or a right. Yes, impacting.
Right, and 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 one of the things, and I just, it 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 gets to your, um, to your earlier point, um, number Maroli, is, you know, the the traffic study was done based on projections. Right, um, those projections are, you know, you've dealt with them before, we've, we are, we have not yet, we, that the building is complete, we do not have a tenant signed up, right, so that building is currently being marketed to appropriate users. Uh, one of the things I've shared this with Jeremy and, um, and Jack, um, the, the, uh, we we may secure a tenant that has significantly less traffic than projected. Right, so there's a ceiling. The warehouse.
Designed to have loading docks in the back of it.
It's designed, it's designed to accommodate, uh, uh, truck traffic. Um, no doubt. Yep, it's designed to accommodate that, and, um.
So we should be, so we should anticipate the the worst case from a traffic standpoint?
Uh, you can anticipate a worst case, but my point is that once we see, if we are able to secure a tenant that is satisfied with the existing conditions, that is not going to impact that intersection, then it would, you know, it would only be a smart business decision on our part to not do the intersection if we're no longer required to do it. Yeah, can I, can I point through, sure.
So if I, uh, there I'm correct here, so Talbot Farm Road and Plain Street, right? Um, so basically, uh, a couple of things, one, I, uh, within the town of Mendon, all the proposed work is being done within the existing right of way. So there is, um, there's sufficient right of way within the town of Mendon. On the Hope Town side, there is, um, there's a vacant corner, so this would be the northwestern corner of of the intersection here. Um, that is vacant, there's a pretty significant, um, expansion of the right of way, so taking of land uh, off that corner parcel that would allow the widening of the mouth of Plain Street and also widening, um, you know, expanding the right of way on the Hope Town side of Hartford Ave East. Right, um, so there will be additional right of way granted, in this case, it'll be, the right of way will be granted to the town of Hope Town because it's on the Hope Town side. So what we're, what we're, what we're providing here is, is we're going to be providing, uh, updating the intersection to include on Hartford Ave East and West to three lanes of traffic. So they'll, which will allow for dedicated left turn lanes on heading um, heading east, it would be a dedicated left turn lane onto Plain Street, heading west, there'd be a dedicated left turn lane for the residents of the Talbot Farm. Able to get we'll say I stood down here, um, today at about four thirty and it's, I think this is going to be a dramatic improvement for the residents of the Talbot Farm based on existing conditions, never mind with uh, with with increased traffic based on, uh, some of the additional work. So, so other things here to to point out, so there are two masks, there are two mast arms that are being located on the um, on the Mendon, um, side here, so this this mast arm here will control traffic heading east, uh, and then there's a mast arm here that will, um, uh, that's going to be providing traffic, uh, providing signals for traffic heading south down down Plain Street. There is a mast arm on the Hope Town side here that again is going to be, is going to be provoked, it's extra long mast arm because it's going to provide, uh, directions coming out of Talbot Farm Road. Another mast arm here for the west traffic, so I was, I was mistaken, there are four mast arms, two in, two in Mendon, two in Hope Town. Um, the poll relocations, where these are the, these are where the polls will be relocated to. Um, there's an, there's a, there's another, there's another plan in this set that can, uh, like, if you, if why, I can point out under existing conditions where they're, um, where they're currently located. This is the, it's all paving and striping, and I want to say, I want to, I do want to add that one, you know, one of the, one of the enhancements to the intersection is dedicated bike lanes that will have, uh, stop, stop traffic and stop signals now. Uh, you know, there are bike lanes that are at least being provided within the existing limits of work, uh, but it creates an opportunity for future, um, uh, future bike paths and, you know, future, future road improvements. So I I I regarding the the polls, there's one, two, three, one here. And then there's, um, there's, there's two on, two on Plain Street, right? And without, you know, they're, they're basically being taken from the existing edge of pavement to the kind of the back of the existing right of way, right? And then from the property line, so where, so the work that's being done, so we will be, we, the we will, the the limit of work will come to the edge of the right of way. And on the, after the edge of right of way, there will be five, uh, a five foot shoulder, that would be lom and seed. So for everybody on the Mendon side of the intersection, we'll have a, there'll be a five foot lom and seed shoulder, five foot bike lane, and then the actual vehicular traffic, um, uh, within Hartford Ave East. So. I'm not a traffic engineer, that was my best, uh, best attempt at, uh, filling in on the work, maybe I should have consulted with, uh, with Mast dot here, but, uh.
Or the one we find the answer.
Yep.
You said that the whole of Hartford Avenue East is in Mendon. So what does it mean that there is going to be some expansion into Hope Town of Hartford Avenue East?
Well, if they widen the road.
Right.
Right, then the right, right of way will expand, my understanding is it's not being, well, I guess they're going to take land on Hope Town side, correct? So the right of way will extend.
It'll just expand, that's, that's about.
I I I believe in, in, in Mr. Maroli. I believe there is, you know, it's, there is some paved area in Hope Town. Is that accurate, or do you think?
My understanding is, it's all Plain Street, Hartford Ave East.
Yeah.
And my understanding was always, this is going back over thirty years.
Yep.
The entire entirety of Hartford Ave East is within the jurisdiction and then including the ground, that was my understanding.
Okay.
And then the, you know, the, all of, all of the Hope Town properties, you know, on on the Plain Street side of Hartford Ave, certainly on Hope Town properties, but but so, but the actual roadway and the right of way extends, it's ten, it's is all Mendon's property and it's built. But you know, I guess the question I have is could, we we could, I I think approve this road opening permit pending the reconstruction of the intersection, right, because I think what we want to make sure, I mean, not that we was the road wouldn't have to be open if the intersection wasn't approved, I think we really need to have that. We need to have this intersection improved.
My God.
That is one level set length, my understanding here. This project in Hope Town is going ahead. We will have
It's built.
any equipment plus coming into Mendon. As is, nothing is done today, that's happening.
Project is booked.
Right, so town of Mendon can this would be in the best interest of the town to get this for at somebody else's expense. And it'll improve traffic, as I understand it from my own experience, quite a bit by having some stabilization on Hartford Ave West. Right, so, um.
From a safety standpoint, it's a no brainer.
Yeah, just for the, for the safety, you know, right, I mean, I think so as I sit here, I'm saying, why wouldn't we do this? And I'm open to even doing it, I think we're going to be vending a confirmation from the planning board, because there's that in Mendon, this is a Mendon project, planning board, we're looking at these schematics and we think that's, just like we did with Mast dot on sixteen.
Exactly.
Right, and so I think it's fair, although the planning board does not have jurisdiction, they cannot open permit anymore, and Jack and team have the expertise to weigh in on this.
Exactly.
I think that's my, are you kind of going to say, aren't they, you said, yeah, that, that, and if that's the DOT is here, first of all, we appreciate everything you've done. Really, and I'm just looking for any input.
I, I.
I don't, uh, because obviously this is only one piece of the puzzle
Yep.
of all of that traffic that's coming down, I'm feeling.
I I just wanted, again, through you, and Joe, to address, um, in regards to comments there, it, Jack, Jack's been part of the meetings, and Jack, and we hired, we hired MDM. We hired MDM who is planning, who I believe did the peer review for the Cape Road project that is, that is making a, uh, an improvement to the Cape Road, uh, Hartford Ave East intersection, right, they're expanding that turning language, which I think makes a, makes a whole lot of sense.
And where it's been intended, but it sounds like this hearing has been extended, well, the poll location hearings extended, maybe it has to be when we're concerned with location of polls. But part of me says that it's within the right of way. This seems to me that far more benefit to the town to get that fortunately means tree, that I'll be able to talk about possibly replanting trees as we did with the sixteen work. People are probably too trees were lost, trees were brought back in, I'm not sure if that's been specified to those in town. But part of me is like, I'm not sure I'm going to go aggressive, make a decision moving forward, but I don't think it even been, uh, I'm just saying we have to peer review, Jack, and say, yeah, I'm good on the design, but I don't, just, you know, like, if you feel better, we can.
And I just caution you in the time of the year, right, so it's, um, you know, we would, we would, we would like to this is a eight to ten week construction, um, process that.
Yeah, well, mine is not only, I thought, I have a feeling that all of these issues that we've discussed have already been addressed now. And Jeremy, I actually.
Right, because I have.
Yeah. That's a lot of questions. It's in regards to the statement that you gave before about completing the smart business decision, not to move forward with this, if you had a tenant this trial. Is that a possibility, so agree with this, like, get a tenant with less traffic? Is the intention not to move forward with this, or is, is it locked in by us?
Well, there, um, so I'm the, I'm the project director, right, for, for a company, for a company that owns eighteen million square feet of, of warehouse industrial space throughout the, right, so there there are decisions that are made above, above me on a daily basis. I can tell you that if we were able to move forward with this project sooner than later, we have a contractor already under contract. We've already applied to National Grid, you know, there's all, uh, all of the, the legwork that has been done, we, we anticipated starting this project in the spring. So it would be our desire, based on, you know, for a whole host of reasons that I probably don't even need to get into, but from financing and from occupancy permits and, uh, you know, project closeouts, such, it would be our desire to move forward with this with the completion of the intersection sooner rather than later, right? If we're, if we're run into, uh, and I, I don't familiar with Mendons, but I know at certain points of the year, you can't pave after certain, uh, you know, certain dates and, um, you know, we'd, we'd prefer to avoid any of those weather related construction.
So, so when is, is it the hope that this would start this fall, as soon as this fall?
Yes.
And do you know how long it would?
We're projecting an eight to ten week, um, construction, uh, uh, build, does that sound about right?
Yeah, it it's, it's based upon, uh, N grid schedule to move the polls. We, we can't do the rough work and leave the polls in the middle of the road.
Single lane of traffic, what, what will the, what will the impact?
Plans, so that the, the, the approved plans reviewed by MDM included, you know, had a traffic management component to them as to, you know, how how it's managed, you know, I assume they probably make sure that they maximize the traffic flow during, I was there at four thirty, I was there at four thirty today and that's that would be a time that you'd want to, you know, we probably don't want constructions crews there, right, so they're, you know, they, they end up working around those, those times.
Hey, there, question? Yes, so just to kind of close loop on the planning, so yes, planner Jack Contror has been involved in this kind of from the beginning. Uh, these plans have been shared with the planning board, they have taken it up, and I haven't had a special group of plans for specifically. Uh, but it's, uh, but Jack's opinion, uh, that it's not planning board, um, a bit of a purview, which I, I I think everybody is clear about and understands. Uh, the vote from the Hope Town planning board is from a chair on screen right now, um, so it's conditioned, you know, they still have to do the intersection um, all of that language is if Mendon does not grant the, uh, street opening. So I read this to say, if the street opening permit is granted, then Hope Town's condition applies for the, um.
Do they have to do?
Okay. And today it's a front.
That's a good point, I hadn't thought of that angle, so.
And not, not to get too outside of purview with this, I'm going to ask you, if this any if this has any impact on the intersection of it going forty Hartford Ave, many of the plans with that.
Um, Mr. Maroli, I'm really not familiar with that, uh, as I know there aren't any, but I'd, I'd be out of my lane to speculate.
I was, I was told that with the other project up, up on, uh, on Cape Road permit, that that contractor was, had purchased a piece of the right of way insanely at that corner of Hartford Ave Forty, because that road was going to be widened as well.
Yeah, nine hundred feet, nine square feet was conveyed from the property on the corner there to that developer to be able to make.
That's accurate.
But that's all the, um, those, that's a state road, so DOT, and I realized it's, it's a big organization.
That, uh, that project, because of that intersection and the requirement for, for a mast dot road opening permit, that received a MEPA review. Um, um, so I, I, I am familiar with, I, I did look at that because we, we had to, we had to, um,
It's all types.
We had to include the, the, the Cape Road project in our traffic study, and the Cape Road project had to include our project in their traffic study, so that it was, you know, the, the flows were projected appropriately, I guess.
Any, any insight into what, what the plans are for that intersection, that improvement?
I know that heading north on Cape Road is, is, it's, it's that stretch there. So those, the, the existing signal pole and telephone poles are going to be pushed in there, and they're, they're gonna, there's going to be a, an enhanced right turn out of Cape Road onto Hartford Ave East.
Do you have any idea of the timing of that as compared to your intersection?
Well, I was, I happened to be in the neighborhood today, so I drove by, it appears that that Cape Road project is actually under construction.
The Cape Road project, I mean, it's the intersection.
My, are the, the Plain Street intersection or the intersection? Oh, I would, I would assume that similar to how ours, our condition was, was prepared, that that intersection work will need to be done in conjunction with an occupancy permit on the Cape Road project. Right, that's.
But instead of just involving Mendon, it involves Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Correct.
Because it's a state road.
Correct.
I guess that's the question I'm trying to ask, anything about that timing of it? But you're telling me you've seen those plans, so there are plans that exist and have broken, and the property's been conveyed, so we know, we know what's going to happen, we just don't know when.
And what's interested with that answer?
Sure. He told the, the plans for the.
Yeah, because, because Mendon's planning board had to approve that as part of that year, up there, so that's.
That's right.
So I guess it, it sounds like we are at a crossroads here, so do we want to? Do we want to consult the planning board further, or do we want to move forward with this?
Well, I, I mean, if, if you're telling me that the planners already said it's not, it's not a matter, and it, and it's already been shared. And when I spoke to the planning board chair, and this was a couple of months ago. It, you know, had, he, he hadn't seen it. But if it's been, if it's been studied to death, which it sounds like it has been.
It's been, I want to make sure I'm not misconstruing.
Yeah.
It's been shared with the planning board chair, it has not been, to my knowledge, an agenda.
Yeah, but he's, but he's aware, so that's, that's a change.
And Jack Contror, planner, has been instrumental part of this process and is a supporter on any.
I haven't heard any information on it.
Right, I think, right. I mean, I think it's something that, that town, did it benefit our town?
Right.
I do want to make a motion.
Excellent.
Second. All right, so I move to approve the issuance of a road opening permit for the proposed intersection improvements at Hartford Avenue East, Plain Street, and Talbot Farm Drive as presented by the Kira.
Kira.
Kira. Engineering, the project will be subject to the terms and conditions outlined by the Highway Surveyor and other relevant authorities. Ensuring compliance with all applicable safety, engineering, and environmental regulations.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right. Should we, is this, is this require a roll call vote?
I just wonder.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Right, great, thank you very much.
Thank you for having us, we, we were, we were happy to be able to clarify any. Yeah.
Process.
Yes.
We're not experts, and I think that we have these things for us. Highway surveyor should be here, want planning board input, if you want it's Jack, Dylan, or somebody, we need to get the right team here. Type down some ground in terms of different players, I think, in these topics, and of public safety.
I'm happy, yeah, I share the work, um, highway, these kinds of.
Good.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm studying the roadway, I'm sure it should present, because it was totally similar to John.
Yeah, he has, he has.
Well, that's like Monday, with the production. That's very, we need to meet all questions for this at the same time.
Yeah, I can, but still, yeah.
Great, so we are continuing to think things out of order a little bit, I think that, sorry, we. We need to go back to five, but I think it would make sense to keep going, because we have a guest here, so to keep going with number eight. Which is to review the Mast OTB or sixteen project. So yes. I guess, and if you could just introduce yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Michael Ruderman. I'm one of the area supervisors with Mast dot's right of way section. First purpose for being here tonight will seem like a little bit of a formality after all the meetings, the public meetings, the discussion about the design plan. But there are some, a couple of Mendon town owned properties that are involved in the project. And we want to have, if we can, face to face meetings with all of the owners whose properties will be involved in any highway project. So that's why I'm here tonight, that's the first purpose. You certainly know that there's a highway project coming along, one point nine miles of Route sixteen, starting just over the Hopedale side of the town line and continuing back to the west. So you know that. I can also give you an update on where we are in the process. We're meeting with all of the owners whose properties will be affected. At the same time as we are advancing the construction design to the point where we can actually put it out for bid in the contracting public. But we're not there yet. We think we'll accomplish all of those things that we need to get to construction. Which I sometimes refer to as the, you know, the dirt dusting diesel fuel stage of the job in about a year. We have it in, in general terms marked on our calendar for fall of twenty twenty five. I'll answer whatever questions come up in the rest of the discussion and, or take note of them and get back to your administrator with answers to them. If I don't have the answers, the last thing is that we're asking for the town's concurrence in granting to Mast dot. The easements and the interests in the affected properties town owned that will allow us to get in there and do the job that we are anticipating doing. I've given Jeffrey the sketches, and I think we have the first one up on the screen. The, the interests in land that we're asking you for are primarily temporary for, for getting onto the land, doing the work, and getting off as, as soon as is convenient for us. There is one parcel of land that is a little bit more involved in which we need, and we're asking you for, a permanent utility easement. Which basically gives us the air rights to string a new utility line. And thereby also the privilege of coming back onto that strip of land and fixing it when it needs maintenance. So there's one permanent utility easement, and there's also one fee taking that is proposed in this project. A fee taking, this is, will sound a little bit convoluted, but a taking in fee in order to give back to you as public roadway. So we will use our power of eminent domain to take this piece of land, allow the public to use it as a roadway, and in the same action, turn it back over to you as part of your public roadway. And this is the area that I'm talking about. It's the very acute intersection where Maple and it's Hastings Street on the other side, it's where the Civil War monument is. And what we propose to do is to make that intersection a whole lot easier to navigate safely by pulling back the roadway. This is sort of a lady's genuine description, pulling back the roadway away from that very narrow point of the triangle. To an area behind it and round it off, so that the new course of traffic would be to circulate around an arc. Rather than getting to the point of, of a sharp break and then turning extremely hard over your shoulder to see where the traffic is coming. That's the orange area, which we are proposing to take the parcel two dash one dash T. There's no secret to the code, the two represents, this is only the second project that Mast dot, Mast DPW, Mast Department of Highway is going all the way back into the eighteen nineties. It's only the second one we've done in Mendon. The one means it's our first fee parcel, and the T at the end of that means in order to give back over to the town as part of a town roadway. So that's that orange parcel. Right behind that, you have a grayish area that we need access to temporarily for working space. That's, that's the TE part of the parcel designation, temporary easement. And the purplish is where we need the utility easement for an overhead line. I don't know if we were diligent about taking, taking these air rights and, you know, ground access for utility lines in the past, we are now. So that's probably the parcel of land that is most involved. When we get a little bit further along in the right of way process, someone from our relocation section will contact you as the representatives of the owner of the town. And ask, how would you like the Civil War monument to be recited? And they'll work with you to figure out if there's room to keep it pretty much where it is, if we can pull it back safely away from the new curb line. If there isn't. You can pick a place in, in town and we will relocate it to there. Our general rule, rule is that items of personal property which need to be relocated, this is at our expense. Can be relocated up to fifty miles away from, from where they currently stand. I'm sure that, that takes it all of the time. But that's your decision on where we would like it to be relocated. I know it's been on that corner since, since this month in eighteen ninety one. Land was deeded to the town in September, and the monument was dedicated in October eighteen ninety one.
I knew this is maybe a difficult question, do we know if there was any condition on the deed of that land?
I've read the deed, there isn't. It's, it's to the town for the purposes of the town. There was nothing in there about, about, you know, expressing a purpose without which the band reverts, not in, not in my reading.
There's nothing, nothing that stops us from, or nothing from the state from taking it and giving it back and repurposing it and not putting the money back there.
Correct.
What's the overhead utility for, I played or?
If you could roll back to, to that sketch, I'll step over here to the screen and point out in a second. Okay. A new utility pole to be installed here, that's within the red lines here, which denote the right of way. So. A new utility pole to be installed here with a wire connecting. In that direction, it's actually off the plan here, but it will traverse the piece of town owned property right over here. So we're asking you for the right to, to put it there, to put it, to put it above, and the back of the future for maintenance.
Right line there, that's the, the round turn that you're talking about?
Oh.
In the middle of the yellow.
It's where we propose to put the new curb to bring traffic around this intersection in a much safer and surer way of navigating the turn.
So there won't be an island there anymore?
There will be.
It looks like there is.
There will be, the island will remain from the green line, which would be the new edge of the town's road at this location. All the way back to what's marked here on this plan is thirty four feet plus or minus, that's the, that's the extent of the land that was deeded to the town. So there will still be an island here, it will extend from these two points out here and then follow, follow this green line. The curb will be out from that here. In the.
The monument itself?
Sure. Uh, the usual code for reading these is what's in the faintest print are the existing items, the heavier print is what we propose to put in. So in the faint print. See this square? That's where the monument is.
I believe that there's a square there.
Yeah. It is.
You can see it on your screen.
The curves, the curve that surrounds the actual, the actual monument itself are here. Back one quarter of, of the curb is actually outside of, outside of the deeded property boundaries, it's actually in the road.
So the monument is very close to where will be.
It's extreme.
Actually in the island to make that. Like, is that, I mean, I don't remember what all is there, like, in terms of trees and whatnot, like.
It's, it's flat and only minimally landscaped.
So I. Isn't it during, they, great, I'm sure that there are, there are times of the year that that monument is, is in.
And I'm just wondering if. Probably a question for the historical commission, if, if there's someplace in town that we better suit soon enough, based on where some of the Civil War era veterans may be buried. Does it go to one of the cemeteries, does it move to, do we, do we move it to?
So I, I'm just, first conversation with the historic, with historic commission to say, this is happening, let's have a conversation about where. So the, the first thought is, you know, as you said, here, but then there's a wider discussion behind the historical commission, which is kind of have.
And, and we're willing to talk with whoever you wish to bring into that conversation when we get to the relocation discussion.
And you're saying that's just going to be a space instead of, you know?
The gray area, yes, the purple area, we only need for the privilege of stringing the wire across. The orange area, we are going to turn into roadway. Yours.
Good question, could you tell the board commission, is that historic district community as well, both are representative?
Their plan, their collective plan is to have a membership there.
Not streamline things.
I'll just come on. Be necessary or desirable to have hearing about this monument? Would that be up to the historic commission? You know, where they have had. Hearings about, like, demolitions, but this is, this is not a demolition, this is a movement, but it will permanently change the, the site. So I don't know, I don't know, I mean, any sense of question for the historical commission?
I think we, we would agree that, that, that. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has arrived by eminent domain to, to take the land, so that's going to happen. I think it's a great idea to have a public hearing about where to move it to, but. I don't think we should have it just, we shouldn't wait, if there's any kind of approval that's needed now for the same discussion we had about Florida, about, about making things happen quickly. I think we need to approve or whatever we can now, whatever we asked to approve now.
Sure, I agree. And that, that, yeah, that literally will be discussion for another day. And however you want to structure that is, is your choice. I know other towns have reached out and, and solicited the ideas and input and opinions of members of the veterans community. When we've had to move similar monuments.
Families of, of the names of veterans.
Absolutely, it's in a highly visible, it may, it may be the most visible place where it could be put right now. It would be safe to put in cemetery. Is that where you want people to have to go and see it and, and view it later on? That's your decision.
Just to clarify, what, what would we be voting on tonight specifically, what, what is the scope of what we're considering?
There are three parcels of land, town owned, that are involved in this project according to their deeds, three separate acquisitions. This is one of them, there are two others where we are asking you to, to grant us the right to get on and do some. Digging, clearing of land, clearing brush, pushing back the cleared area from where, from where the edge of the road is today, so that we can do the roadwork that adjoins it. from where, from where the edge of the road is today, so that we can do the roadwork that adjoins it.
Presumably this is done. This is the temporary easements.
That's right. Right. In, in two flavors, you could say one is right of entry where, where we may need to set up and do more work through the project. There's also the, the, the briefest and lightest of impacts in three spots, which we're calling temporary construction areas, which we will need very little access to, but we would like to get in there and clear back, clear back the undergrowth so that we have a clean edge to be working.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Maybe, uh, before we move to that, I have a question about, uh, it was the, the one that lies partially within conservation area. But impact is attached to conservation area. I know it's not like our jurisdiction. I just wanted to know that.
It's all correct. I think it's yours because it is owned by the town. Uh, let me point out again here, uh, we need to go about, there's the little four, about four feet back from the edge of the road. It'll probably extend back a little bit more right there in the middle of the saddle here. This is literally just, um, uh, grading back the level of the dirt and, and clearing the vegetation.
So we don't have to go through unconned access?
Pretty sure we are, because that was, there's, there's, there's restriction on that. Conservation restriction for that centerpiece of the land.
True. True. Um, our staff lawyers have determined that temporary construction access does not rise to the level of triggering Article 97 review. I'm afraid I don't understand the law much more than that, but they tell me that this is how we can do what we need to do without needing to ask the legislature for approval.
It's just enough.
Yeah, just enough. Yes. Or the alternative procedure to legislative approval, which the state has still not promulgated. We've been, we've been asking for these guidelines for years. We haven't received any alternative, but we think that a temporary construction access is just enough not to trigger 97, but it gets us to where we need to be.
Is CONCON aware of, been doing any of this work?
Uh, I miss that money for those participants.
I haven't spoken.
I know that, I know that they've been, they're aware of the, of the change of the roadway because we've had those discussions. We had that month, their last fall.
Right. I was saying that the team talking up here.
Right. Well, they, they were, you know, it was made away to everybody that, that 16. Matter of fact, at one point they talked about narrowing to try to slow down the.
Slow down. Now we see something very specific.
Yes.
Land we know how to see our.
Right, right. And the, and the very gentle red arc that runs from left to right, that's the property line today. That's not a change.
And so CONCON has, I, I shared the latest, uh, construction documents that I got from the project manager. CONCON had previous ones and Isabelle has reached out to me to have a confirmation.
Okay.
So she's asked. She, she is fully aware of the project. I'm not sure that she's aware of this four foot easement, but she's aware.
But you're saying it's tempered, right?
Extremely temporary.
Yes. Construction is going to remain untouched, which I think it would have to be.
Tonight, earlier for me, when I said people should be present, I don't think a better option would be a robbing slip process for things like this. So if Thomas gets here, you already built, you've built sign off on it. Yeah. So we have building in part, yeah. And then we can have things pending approval of our, the robbing slip. That process.
Outside of you.
Yeah, that's, that, that's the way it should happen.
I could ask you to scroll through the other plans here. It's good news to my. Here we are. This is again, um, temporary, temporary easement, uh, for construction purposes. Again, uh, this is five feet over here, about six feet over here. Two strips of land underneath where, um, this is where these, uh, big utility easements already in place.
Yeah, it's coming up the hill. On the right.
So to get underneath those lines and just do a little bit of clearing back, in these woods so that we can clear out the bushes here. That's, that's a, that's a bush line, a shrubbery line. Actually, the property line never changes.
I guess some of it was bush trees to really comprehend.
They're, they are close enough that we've just, you know, drawn a line through them to say, yeah, we got to push this back some.
Well, I think some of this we'd be talking about, this is the way they're actually doing.
They'll store it.
Storage here. Did you see how it says Gelli Family Realty?
Yeah, on the right.
Yeah. And this, and this opening here, I'm pretty sure, isn't this the area that where, the solar farmers up in the back? The end of the road.
Yeah, the roadways. Yeah. It's that utility pole of farm.
Right. So this, this road cut, you know, opening, it says rock tree, meaning, you know, rubbing isn't in vegetation. I think that's about where the, uh, where that, it's being built, right?
Yeah, I agree. That's actually a very good block though.
And while it's off, uh, your property, it's on the neighbor's property. I believe that same sketch there where it says, uh, P R O P H M A D W Y. That's proposed hot mix asphalt driveway, uh, to, to repave the apron at least of the entrance there so that it matches up, uh, the same, same grade and, uh, so the seam between the old pavement and the new pavement is back on the private property, not in the roadway. And I know it was, it, just as an aside, a question came up about, about, uh, construction seasons and, and asphalt. We typically use the rule of thumb that a building's season extends until sometime in November for our purposes. I, I'm not sure for others, but that's about the point where the, uh, asphalt plants start shutting down as far as making hot mix asphalt. After that, you get cold patch, which has very, very different characteristics and adherences and may or may not last by filling a pothole to, to the end of the winter. And then sometime again in March, when, when we have all of our tools and materials available again, that's when the construction season starts up. Around that, we can still do, uh, grading or brush clearing and things like that. But that's really when, when we get into the, uh, the real hardened construction work.
Can I, I don't know if anybody has any questions about this piece. I just want to go back to the relocation of the Civil War monument.
Sure.
So you, you will pay to relocate that anywhere within the town?
We'll take your directions as to where to put it. Then we will hire a contractor that on, on our initiative, we'll put that particular piece of the job out to bid separately. We'll select a winning bidder who will be hired just to do that. Yeah, this is without cost to you.
So not throwing it on a highway traffic, just driving it over?
No. Interesting, though you should ask about that. Well, at another place of the project, there are a couple of, uh, at least one, one that I'm thinking of specifically. It's an old colonial mile marker. I think it's right near, um, uh, the Historical Society's building. And I think it's a third Boston Arrow 37 miles. There's a specific call out for that piece of granite right now that it's going to be relocated with, in conjunction with the Historical Society to make sure that, as has unfortunately happened in the past, these things end up on a truck back at the DBW. At this one, no. No, we've engaged the services of our, um, uh, historical asset section. It came up in the, uh, what we call the Section 106 review, which is Section 106 of, um, National Preservation Act, which says that if federal funds are being expended for a highway project, we have to survey, identify and make plans for historical assets within. And we have opposite reports to the, uh, the Secretary of the Commonwealth as Chair of the State Historical Commission on what those plans are. So I can tell you that the colonial milestone, um, which is either from the 1770s or the 1780s. I've seen, I've seen different information on that, uh, that will be conserved very closely. And the neighbor, um, uh, who, who lives very close next door also brought it to my attention and said, you're going to take care of that marker, aren't you?
So I guess, do we want to, uh, I would consider an motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to improve the review of MassDOT 608, one of the most concerned of the Mass. Consultation, its product review, including evaluation design. Those improvements are in the consent of Mass.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, members of the board and, and chairman. And, uh, your instructor has my contact information for what's happening on the ground as the project proceeds from here. So, um, I remain your field agent for, for this work, being all these questions as serious.
We appreciate MassDOT's collaboration.
Thank you.
I was thinking, so we skip over, uh, item five. So this is a quick statement. I just wanted to get it in before we lose sight. So acknowledgements and announcements. So first of all, we have Mendon Safety Day this Saturday, September 1st, 11:00 a.m. Uh, 11:00 a.m. to the pandemic of elementary school. There will be multiple agencies then, then for this entry statement. Jeremy, do you have any, anything to add on that? So a big event?
Yeah, it's a big event. Uh, police, fire, uh, fire, anti-police, Mass State Police, uh, DCI, Highway, uh, people need lights light there. There's, uh, there's, there's quite, quite a few there and it should be great.
I see. And we have Chief Kersey on my open. Any, anything to add, Chief Kersey?
Uh, no, Jeremy covered it all. It's going to be a great event. Um, last time we had one, a lot of people showed up. There's going to be food there. Good time to interact with all your public safety, uh, elements and great for the kids to see all the, the different elements that we have there. Semlek's going to have a good showing with the canines and, and the drone units. So it'll, it's going to be a good time for the whole family.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. And then the other item is the, uh, Mendon Cultural Council Scarecrow Contest, uh, which will be, I guess, registration is open now for, uh, between September 1st to September 30th. And this is for display of scarecrows, I think through October. There was a certainly a thing that we should need on that. I saw that something in the packet.
While you're looking for that, I, I just want to let everyone know that I have signed up for that. So I'm looking forward to making a scarecrow.
I heard you did.
You say you're going for a sample.
So.
I have all the rights.
So I understand that there is, uh, uh, great. I understand that they've had a number of people register already and, uh, including, uh, the Mendon Town Hall that they're going, um, that employees, um, here are going to be putting together a display. I know, uh, the senior center is also putting together a display. I don't know whether like we as a select board wanted to do it. I guess Brendan, you've got, you've got us covered.
Super. Just wanted to put the captain hand on the scarecrow.
Yeah. So, uh, anyhow, so, um, but it's great that there's going to be a display here at Town Hall. I understand they're going to be, uh, putting it between the, the annex and the Town Hall building. So that will be fun for us all to see. And anyhow, so I guess all residents, businesses and municipal departments are invited to participate. So, um, and it's to display scarecrows from October 1st through October 31st. And there will be judging done, uh, through October 19th. There will be a winner announced October 20th, a trophy for a winner plus second and third place. Scarecrows must be family friendly in design and each participant is responsible for maintaining their display. So there are additional, um, yeah, scarecrows cannot block the road or be a hazard to the line of sight. So we cannot build these in the road. We're blocking the road. And then sign, sign up is via email to culturalcouncil@mendonma.gov. And let's see, oh, or there's, I guess there is a, a form as well, which, you know.
You can get it on, on the cultural council's page.
Okay, great. The cultural council's page has that as well. So, uh, we can look forward to seeing scarecrows around town in the next few weeks. All right. Any other, um, acknowledgements and announcements? Okay. All right. So then back for two, number nine, uh, the senior and community center update. I see we have.
I'm here at Dave's there, so we have a few. And Jeremy also.
And if you could just introduce yourself.
Yes. My name's Phil Sibley. I live at Seven Nelson Court, Mendon, Massachusetts. Chair of the, uh, Building Committee for the new senior and community center. Essentially where we're at right now, the final estimate, uh, we should be had getting in the next 24 hours, the final review, and I'd like to come visit with you, Jeremy, to look at the revenue on that. It was projected to come in today and it'll be in by the end of the night. And, uh, we'll have that to work with, uh, to work for communications, work with the financing group and prepare for town meeting that I'd like to propose that we do or planning to do on the 30th of this month, which is a Monday. In addition to that, we've done a utilization analysis and preliminary of it. I'm going to scrub the numbers one more time, but we've done that. With all the potential forecast, it's somewhere around a 90% utilization at the new building, considering all the new capabilities. I'll share that with you, Mike, because I think you have some interest in that. We should have that out to the, to the broader committee by the end of the week. A lot of good work by the team going there and tons of communications efforts going forward. And the next six weeks will be busy, six to eight weeks.
Just to, uh, remind people who were tuning in, uh, this will be on the ballot the, in, for the November 5th election, uh, and, uh, including mail-in ballots, which will be going out, uh, sounds like in early October potentially. Uh, and then, so it will need to, in order to, uh, approve the project, the town needs to both have a majority vote, a simple majority vote in the, in the town election. And then also this will be an, uh, warrant on, or an article on the warrant in the special town meeting, which is scheduled for, uh, November 18th, if I'm remembering the right dates. November, Monday, uh, November 18th. Uh, so, and at that meeting, it will need a two thirds majority. So it needs to pass both in order to have this debt exclusion authorized by the town.
The, the committee's really worked hard on these analysis, tried to reduce the cost of the building as our goal, to keep it around 11 and change number, but we'll get that more specific. So we're trying to save money, reduce the cost, but still make it function as a full senior center and community capabilities.
And, uh, and when is your next meeting in case members of the public?
Yes, anyone would love, and I encourage everyone to come or dial in. It'll be next Tuesday, the, uh, 24th at 6:30 at the police station meeting room or through Zoom.
I was actually going to bring that up because the committee, the group, both committee members, the committee members haven't changed, but more people are attending.
Yes.
But I think the best way people can get any questions answered, more information, just actually remotely participate or show up.
Yes.
And, and, and listen, because of, to your point, a lot of work's been done, a lot of hard work's been done. I think it answers a lot. It, it takes away some of the, uh, I don't know, guesswork that's out there that people are hearing, right?
Yeah, interesting.
Go to the back, go to the meeting, listen, make your questions answered.
You raise a good point, Mike, because as we get questions in from Facebook or other people through email, uh, the first invitation, if we don't. the first invitation, if we don't have an immediate response or answer, just invite them, even if we do have an answer, invite them to the meeting. Invite them to at least two open houses that we'll have, one in September and October. And we're here to answer questions and take ideas. As you go through a project like this, we get the funding passed, there's still a lot of detailed design and engineering work that goes on for the next six to nine, twelve months, so there's still plenty of time for input and insight from the community. But the need's still there. And I think it's a priority for the town.
Anything to add, Jeremy?
Yeah, once we get, once we get the final construction estimate, we'll do the taxpayer analysis, present that in a way that is both consistent with prior communication, sort of factual with our grant.
Will that information be on the town website once it's available, or how will that be communicated?
Yeah, we'll, we'll put it on the town website in a similar way to what the annual town meeting in the spring presentation was put together. And, you know, I'm not, we're not gonna share the whole workbook that has, but they're just still of analysis.
Okay, thank you. Any, any others questions or comments from the board? Because I, I guess I have a question or comment, so. So one is, I know it, there is some question about to what extent we as a board want to demonstrate our support of this project and to what extent sort of we can, I know we cannot, like, the town cannot use a couple of money to advocate for a position in an election in any way. We as individuals are allowed to advocate, and I believe we can still vote to support a project. So that is a question, whether we want to do that, and I guess, a question that I have, maybe for us, maybe for Jeremy, is whether something like a letter to the editor of the, of the Upton-Mendon Free Press is something that the board could do, or whether that is something better for us to consider as individuals rather than as a public board? Mike, could you comment on that?
Based on past experience, it's, it's a, there needs to be a dividing line between us as a, as a board, although we're not spending any money. I mean, I, I think, but it also goes by extension, we voted to move forward with this.
We did.
And those are public votes, so I mean, clearly, we've already established our support. And what we need as individuals to write those letters.
Right. So I think it's just, I think it, it would be helpful for us to clarify what would be helpful from the board for the public to know about our position, I mean, we talk about it at these meetings, but if there's any other way that we can communicate.
Well, when we bring that, warrant article, so, right, isn't that a good, when we have, bring that to discussion?
Yes.
Is that a good moment?
So there's that, although the, the town meeting itself will be after, like, it will be a good month after the earliest people are voting in, in the election.
The warrant article will be approved by the board before the fifteenth of October, I believe, if I remember the date correctly.
Yes.
So that, I would hope that we'd be presenting that to you by the end of the month, the thirtieth is our plan, project plan. But I think in addition to that, I would ask members of the select board to be available for comments regarding some of the other ancillary projects of the town. When we have an open house information session, I'm anticipating questions about, well, we need additional recreation facilities, we need additional fire station, we need whatever it may be. I need more, I would like to have other members be able to communicate other projects or capital things that the town may be looking at, and not just leave that on the way to the committee who's trying to build a community center, try to answer that, so I would ask somebody from the board to be at these meetings on the thirtieth of September.
Yeah, certainly, we can have at least some members, and whether we want to have it be like a, a joint meeting of the select board and the senior center expansion committee, that we could consider that as well, and more than two of us want to attend such a meeting.
That's right.
So, so that would be another way that the select board could show, I guess, support of the project, support of the undertaking.
So, I guess what I'm hearing is, within the normal course of our business, this board's business, both through warrant approval, things like that, we do things in this meeting to demonstrate our support, but I think what I'm hearing is, are the things outside of our normal meeting operation that the board can do.
Right.
More formally to make sure that people who may not be attending or
Right.
minutes understand that as a board, we are supporting this as a key objective for the town, but then strategy.
I can get a specific now, I believe, from the secretary of public health or the ethics commission, whoever have this jurisdiction policy. I will say, as individuals, you're free to go and do absolutely anything you want, except fundraise. You cannot be involved in fundraising, that would be an inadequate value question.
But we're elected, so.
You can serve the fundraising investments?
I believe so, so, yeah, if, if we, so, yeah, there, there's a, yeah, yeah, so you should.
Well.
Clarify that. Clarify, yeah, so.
I will see you better.
I believe that as elected officials, that it is, that is an exemption to that.
You wanna make sure we're dotting M's and crossing T's?
We definitely do.
There are some fundraising activities by the Friends of Elders, which is a five oh four B, I believe, it's a nonprofit, and they do a lot of charitable giving.
Right.
They'll be doing some expenditures for the.
Right, and no fundraising for the political cause can be done using any public funds, public resources, so public buildings, public email. So we could not, for example, email the town, because that would be using the public resource.
But I, I think it's important, Jeremy, if you can, as individuals, does support at these meetings would be helpful.
So I think maybe we could individually follow up and make sure that we, like, any promotion that we do is consistent, I mean, as, as individual board members, for example, searching on elected.
As we look for that, I'm pleased with the additional participation from the community, new members are coming to the team, new members are volunteers to help. We have a replacement, which I think when you hit our forty five day calendar, be presented to the select board, to be added to the committee, to replace Lonnie, who stepped down. So you'll have that request coming in, and once we hit that forty five day window, whatever meetings appropriate.
Like, that is our, the guideline, it's not a hard and vast rule, I don't know. I mean, especially since, you know, this is a, like, a short-term committee with short-term goals, so we could consider.
Yeah, and that's also, the forty five days also, it, it's not a, not a bylaw.
Right, that's what I mean, it's, it's, it's a guideline.
It's a guideline, that's.
Right.
Right, this week's, at our meeting this week, I'll ask the committee, the building committee, to approve the individual and accept him as a nominee to be presented before the select board, so I would, I would think the next select board meeting.
Sure, that sounds great.
We could bring the individual here. I'd like to get to the, back to the seven number.
Yes.
It seems to operate well that way.
So we can follow up later on the question about fundraising. I know, I know there is something in this, in the campaign finance laws that there is an exemption, so it is true that municipal employees, public employees cannot fundraise, but there is an exemption. I know, I don't know the extent of the exemption, but for elected officials, I think the understanding that fundraising is often part of something that elected officials do. But maybe, maybe Jeremy can, like, confirm, deny. And then, by understanding.
Yeah, just the other point, Jeremy, I think Dave was gonna try to set up a meeting with you this week, if he has.
We're gonna meet tomorrow.
Okay. Whatever time that is, I'll join that meeting with you and we'll go over this stuff.
So any other questions? I think we probably don't need to wait on that question, but just.
Well, yeah, whatever.
When in doubt, we can also consult the Massachusetts Office of Campaign Finance. So there are resources, if we have any questions about our own individual involvement, and then we can also consult with Jeremy, and he can give us guidelines, or, yeah, tell us what the laws are, so. More than guidelines, we have to comply with the state laws.
Absolutely.
All state and federal laws.
And, you know, just in closing, I think that last point that Mike brought up, anybody has any questions, feel free to come to committee. Emails are present on the website, town website, I can reach out myself or anyone on the committee. And we'll be more than happy to answer questions, take suggestions.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks, I'll take you.
See you in the next meeting. That's Jonathan Tony. Thanks, Al.
Ah, sure, yes, I'd be happy to jump to twenty, thank you. So this is the liquor license for Barbell eighty eight, so we have S. speak to them, so.
Yep.
If you could introduce.
My name is Zach Sad, and I am a co-owner of Barbell eighty eight.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you, so, yeah, this is our fourth year, we're doing a, we do an annual charity event for uplifting heroes, it's for special needs athletes, for, you know, we supply uniforms, training, all sorts of stuff, family-friendly event. And we're looking for a one-day liquor license.
Any questions?
This is an easy one, I mean, you guys do an awesome job every year.
Yeah, we encourage you guys to, you know, it's not just like members, like, we're, we're definitely open to the community coming by and, you know, checking it out, it's gonna be a really, really good event.
Where, where are you located?
Twenty eight Hastings Street, so throw a rock and hit it, yeah, we're, we're right next to it, pretty much, yeah.
Any other questions?
Uh, no, I'd like to move to approve the one-day liquor license for wines and malt beverages to Barbell eighty eight, uplifting heroes on September twenty eighth from eleven AM to three PM, pending approval of the ratings.
Second.
Any further discussion? Right, all in favor?
Thank you, appreciate you, you guys need anything from me, or you need anything from me, you guys will, Katie will reach out to you with the actual license, with the list of the vendors. Great, and seriously, if you guys are around next Saturday, feel free to come by.
Thank you very much. Thought we'd get it.
Yeah, thank you.
So that is about two things, let me get the numbers, she is here to talk about number seventeen and number eighteen, the mass housing local match and the Denton PNS.
Certainly, we could do those if there are, yeah, if there's nothing else pressing, we could, we could jump to those. So number seventeen, all right, so that mass housing local match, so Jeremy, could you fill us in on this?
Um, yes, so the, the local match on this is, so this is through Mass Haven Finance Corporation. This is to explore the possibility of creating affordable housing on a portion of the parcel at seventy five Providence Street, and requires a local match. The reason Anne's involved in this part of it is CBC has voted to use, excuse me, CPA fundings, CPA money to fund the ten percent match of the five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars required from the town of Mendon. So it's, you know, quite a large feasibility project that we, that we get for six thousand dollars of our own money. Select Board signs the, the agreement, you're the only authorized signatory for the town, so anytime something like this comes up, we need Select Board to vote to be able to sign it, but there is no general fund appropriation or anything like that required from the board. Anne, do you wanna add anything else to this project?
Not really, just, I think it'll be very helpful because at seventy five Providence, or, you know, a lot of places, there's no water and sewer, so it's really hard to understand what we could do on the front part of that property for affordable housing.
Thank you, this seems like a good time, it ties in with our meeting on Monday where we approved Mendon's housing production plan with, along with the planning board, where we are working towards our, the state requirement about affordable housing, and so the, the bottom line is that Mendon is far, false far sort of that state requirement with our one point eight percent. And so we, as a town, are moving towards having more affordable housing units each year. And so investigating potential sites for this isn't, is a key step for this. Any other questions for Anne or comments?
I would move to accept the planning, is it really the?
Any for housing production?
It is, okay, all right, I move to accept the planning for housing production award presented by the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency to support the creation of affordable housing on a portion of the sixty acre parcel located at seventy five Providence Street. Horstley Whitney Group as the consultant to complete the services requested.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Great, thank you, and thank you, Anne, and.
Thank you.
We're not leaving yet, because we have another item, which is the Denton purchase and sale agreement. So, Jeremy, do you wanna fill us in, or should we have Anne?
I think Anne should start and set the stage, and I'll fill in and answer questions as needed, but she is a much better expert on this.
So Anne, please.
Yep. Um, it's the property that the town voted to preserve, put a conservation restriction on, on their road that Peter Denton owns. And so we need to put together a purchase and sale agreement for the town to sign and for Peter to sign. And so this is the first, like, draft of the PNS that we would like to send to Peter's lawyer, so that they can review it.
Before, um, this had a back and forth between our town council, Metacom Land Trust has been involved, Anne's been spearheading this, lots of back and forth on it, and it's finally got to this point, so what we're looking for is a select board vote to approve the purchase and sale agreement for the Denton property, and then we'll send it over, they'll sign it, and I'll come back and select.
And this document has been vetted by our town council.
I know.
It looks pretty vetted.
A number.
It's pretty beat up.
Well, I would make a motion to a purchase and sale restriction and purchase of the same property. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, Anne, thank you for putting all your time and effort into this, I know it's been, it's been a few months that you've been actively pursuing this, so.
Yep.
Happy to discuss this, thank you.
Before she goes, I just wanna, one more time publicly, personally, you for being recognized.
Thank you.
And riding the fire truck and you're all of us.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, and she got additionally another, a recognition from our state rep Brian Murray as well, so in addition to the, the one from our town, we obviously also got some recognition from the state, very well deserved, so.
Hey, congratulations.
Thank you. All right, bye-bye.
Now, all right, so we've got a few other things, so let's go back to ten, ten should be also a short one. So to review a request from the Mendon Upton Regional School District to install electric vehicle chargers. Jeremy?
Yeah, so the, the lease that the school district has for the school, they need your permission to make modifications. So they're looking to put electric vehicle chargers in. This, the language that's in here is not the language of what the lease amendment would be, that would be something negotiated through town council and sent back to them. But before we spend time doing that, and rather than having to go on a specific language. Uh, but before we spend time doing that, and rather than having to go on a specific language, if you would go to amend the lease, um, to include EV charging stations. Per town council approval, pending town council approval, um, sort of looking for you.
Is this in both Mr. and Fluff or?
Just Fluff.
Just Fluff?
Is that because just Fluff is where we need to amend the lease? And they are, but like, do you know more about this project?
I believe they are doing them both, but I can find out first.
And, uh, also just for the record, could you talk a little bit about the funding mechanism for this?
Um, yeah, so they are not requesting any, um, any funding from us, from the district, they're using, um, third party, um, I'm not sure of the exact, um, financing agreement. But it's a, a third party funding, um, where the school district's not on the hook for them, so they're using a, a combination of incentives and kind of owns the piece of yet. It's better for you, but there is no cost, it's, there's no cost to the school district or the town.
Any other questions?
No, this is a fantastic idea.
Okay, great.
I'm willing to put some off of the panels, up the.
Yeah, because we have all the solar.
So in my experience with, um, solar carports, they often have, um, charging stations below them, but they're not, it's not actually said by.
Right, yeah.
It comes in the ground in that place.
Yeah.
It comes like a net net thing, um, they like to put them there because it keeps it out of the weather.
Alright, I would, uh, move to approve the request to install EV charging stations at Club School and according to the terms of the lease, which require prior approval from the Select Board for any alterations to the property. This installation will be subject to compliance with all applicable regulations and coordination with relevant departments to ensure proper placement and safety.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then, uh, let's see, next is eleven Providence Street Culvert, sorry, did you have something to say?
I was just gonna ask, I know the chief curisy is on it, or if he was on for, just because he's monitoring, if he has a specific article on, you know.
Um, no, he, uh, was, I talked to him earlier about, um, the road opening permit, uh, but I believe he's just on.
Okay.
Just on.
And so you're.
I'm just on to be on.
Okay.
I guess I don't have to speak for you, chief.
So, uh, yeah, so eleven Providence, uh, Street Culvert update, uh, Jeremy?
Yeah, uh, so, uh, surveyor John definitely is not here tonight because we don't, we don't have an update on the project time, but they're still working on the kind of due diligence on the aluminum piece. And, um, a recommendation on how we should, how, how they think the town should perceive whether, um, on the, on the concrete piece, on the aluminum piece, what we get for, so they're, they're still kind of working that out, more information to come. I want to keep it on the agenda, so we keep talking about it, and it's still a priority for us to get you updates on these cases.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Alright, so then, uh, twelve, twelve is Town Land Recreation Field Committee, uh, so charter discussion, so. Uh, we have a, like, in the packet was a, um, post charter for this.
Yes.
Comments on this?
Page sixty three, um, yeah, so we had a long discussion on this last time, um, and, uh, Mike Goddard had sent me, um, some notes which I found helpful to, to inform this charter. Um, it's a, I think it's a little, it's a little light, I don't know if it's broad, it's a little light, um. I will say before we get into this specific charter discussion, um, about the committee itself, I had a meeting yesterday with, uh, MU RSD Superintendent and School Business Official and the town manager from Upton. Um, they have a similarly styled committee working with, uh, MU CP, something.
That's correct.
Yes, um, and so, uh, I, I shared with them where we are in this process, that we have to stand up the committee, have to advertise and form and all of that. Uh, but it's my intention, uh, expressed as the board's intention for our committee to work collaboratively across the community, um, and that, um, you know, their efforts would work hand in hand. Because we really, we don't want to build, you know, four or five, one sport specific fields and then Upton goes and builds the same thing. Um, I think, uh, you know, there's a lot of overlap, there's, you know, distinct community needs, um, but there's a lot of overlap between, uh, what, you know, we can share between communities. There is also a lot of discussion about building an athletic complex in Upton, um, that MU CP is, is discussing, um, and their, their committee's discussing. I think that's a much larger question and not necessarily the third group of committees and, uh, invented, uh, so I didn't.
Is that the, uh, for the high school, is that the, yeah, we actually have been involved in, that's actually one of the subset of this.
Yeah, we, I mean, we went, we attended a meeting where they presented, uh, that MU CP presented about this project. And, right, and Mike Goddard has been, uh, attending, um, capital planning meetings for, uh, for the school district as well.
That, that, that effort is part of the school's five year capital planning, so.
So I guess I, one, uh, well, okay, so you said that's sort of preliminary before we just discuss this.
And one, one thing I did know, um, Mendon can use CPA funds to construct, um, fields in, uh, Upton.
Oh, in Upton, oh, interesting, does that mean that Upton can use CPA funds to construct fields in Mendon? So, yeah.
Is that because we're bound by a, a regional school system?
That was the interpretation I was given from Anne's side, and it becomes, I don't know if she said easier or, um, more appropriate than her wording, um, but if Upton uses CPA funds too. So I would imagine Mendon, if Mendon's using CPA funds, we would look to Upton and say, you know, commit.
Potentially, there could be joint projects with the town, so even outside of the school district ones, so.
Yeah, my question on CPA was narrow to this project, so.
Yes, yes.
To, to which product?
To the proposed school project. Now, conceptual.
Oh.
I think, I think Mike Craver brought this up, is that all our youth sports are combined.
Yeah.
So I think, once again, this, there's, 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 there's a very big picture of which I think the school's effort is a piece of. We want to try to get this committee to get in front of the broader Mendon, Upton sports field needs, because even those groups at the project meeting we attended. Did not, I don't think they felt their, their needs were being adequately addressed by what the high school was doing, not that that project's not a good one, it just wasn't enough, so, yeah.
And, and, um, I think if this committee was not stood up by this town, you know, then that project, that the field discussion and field project would happen anyway and we would just not have kind of a, a say and be able to. Have directed.
So did, uh, people have a chance to, uh, review the proposed charter?
I, I say the committee will consist of no seven, no more than seven members, of course.
Ah, okay, that's a good.
Seven, no, I think I'd have done with five.
So it's no more than seven.
Um, and I have three, I have written three representatives from committees, um, should want to kind of change that composition, you know, of course, it's wrong, you know, amendable.
Okay. Right, so the, the proposal is that it's a representative from land use committee, representatives from parks commission, representative from the planning board, and then four representative, red representatives appointed by the select board. So I noticed there's no, no one from the select board suggested to be on the committee, um, so, uh, and I guess that's a question, um.
Yeah.
For, yeah, for, for us, I mean, certainly with other committees, we've had, like, we've been liaisons, but there are some committees where we are, um, voting members. Because that is how the, the committee is composed, so I guess that's one question that comes to mind for me is. Do we think it's appropriate to have a select board member be a member of this committee? Or do we want to have it be more like liaison advisory capacity but not voting? Because I suppose ultimately voting about projects will come back to the select board?
I think that's what we discussed previously is, it comes with force anyways, so.
Right, and I know, well, I know a number of us are very, like, we really want to see this happen, we want to make this happen, um. But I guess the question is, is there somebody who really wants to see a select board member be on the committee as a voting member?
I don't personally think it's a hundred percent necessary, I, I think I'm not opposed to.
Okay.
That was before, and I think she's made very nice with that spread, I think the select wouldn't, doesn't need to be involved, just to get it some.
What, what, what are we gonna, is my question? Like, what, what's the select board going to do for this committee that's gonna help them? Or, or not, like, in my mind, sometimes the select board gets leaned on.
So I mean, I guess the question is voting member or like active participant that is not a voting member?
So we don't really need to be, I mean, any, any citizen can vote to be.
Right, but I think, I guess the, um. I guess as liaison, we don't necessarily have a, a role, although often, like, effectively, we are sort of there and in communication, like. I guess seated at the table, or seated in the audience.
No, opposed to it, I just don't think it's necessary, I think any, any one of us. That wanted to, we can, any can.
Alright.
Part of my reasoning for not really caring either way, but not wanting to put somebody up, like, I guess I'm leaning, I'm leaning towards not wanting to support it. Is that we're putting, like, we're, we're for, forcing the, the representation from other boards that we've already have chartered with, or committees with missions. And we don't directly sit on those. And so they're coming together to do something the community really wants done, but with representation from an official part of the town. And I, I just don't know how we would help.
So by that logic, though, we're asking the planning board, who are elected, parks, who are elected, not land use, but they're made up of, like, uh, to join a committee. But we're not really putting our own time and effort forward from this board to help move a town's strategic priority up, that's why I'm, how I look at it. And it could be.
That is a way to look at it.
Yeah, well, if it was, if it was appointing four representatives, one of those could be from the board. That's, it's like.
Right, although, I mean, I know it's, uh. Is our town clerk might have an opinion about that, I know, like, I, she advised me to step down from the tax aid committee because I, she felt it was not appropriate for, um. For a select board member to appoint, like, to be appointed in that way, I know if it's, if sort of a select board member is an official part of a committee, I think that's different than, than a person being.
So like, I'm part of the CPC?
Right.
Because representing the select.
Yeah.
That's different than if you were, the select would point me as an individual to that.
Right. So, I mean, I guess I. You know, I know, Mike Goddard, you've put a lot of thought into this, so I think, you know, I would probably be on the side of including, uh, a select board member in the committee. But, um, we are a committee of five, so I think.
When, when we did the senior center?
Yes. We did, actually.
The same sort of, uh, it's the longer term initiative, but when we put that together, I will. Remember what we said about why we wanted the select board on that.
Right. From a senior center, committee viewpoint, it's a way to plug us in to all the other resources with the town.
I.
Keeps the problem very visible because of the high priority, like I said, it's recreation.
Right, just, just, right, to some extent, yeah, I agree, it signals that the select board is committed to this project. Um, and that we will be sort of tied in closely to it in a way that it might not if we, um. Did not, I mean, I don't know, so I, I can see, I can see advantages of it, um, I mean, I.
The only other thing I would say is, we brought these other groups together to talk about this concept, I, I do feel that we should probably want to have some skin in the game.
Right.
That's all. And, and that's a side point, adding select board representation in the senior center has been invaluable. Getting us through the very ultimate steps, but having to move things along. The, the primary, not the alternate, it's been invaluable. Even yours, well.
So I don't think the select board member is not going to be invaluable, but it, it's a bit of a shortcut, and so there's a slide of work I'm going to put on every committee. I think, like, that's the thing, is the bandwidth isn't there to supply this type of support to every single committee.
Might ask you what the priorities are.
Right, so, I mean, yeah, it is, that, that's a good question, because we are pushing forward a lot of committees right now, um, some of which have a select board member and some of which don't. So like the zoning bylaw review committee.
Yeah, I was questioning my, yeah, my thoughts as well, of like, which, where is the edge, it can't just be my, it's just be my prerogatives, right?
Right.
And so, um. Yes, I, I hear it, like, like, I understand, and, and they'll hit it on the head, that you get more capabilities with a select board member.
And it's a project, big ticket, I have a big priority, makes sense, advice probably, but I don't feel like.
So, it is my initial reaction to minimize official select board roles on other committees, you appoint those committees and those committees are ultimately answerable to this board. Um, you are, you have your liaison process and you're also free to attend any meeting you want and will be given airtime by any committee if the select board member shows up. Um, and you're also free to add and get these prerogatives to the agenda, um, with the, you know, chair setting the agenda, um, to have them come and be constant, um, in the conversation. Um, I know any sort of vote and regulation norm is a slippery slope, but you start to get to, you know, what is this like, what identifying as a priority and, you know, like, s- some members that are, do we get, get a member on every?
So when, I guess another question I have is, can we build it into the charter for this, that they work with a select board liaison?
Slash member.
Right, well, if we, I mean, is, so as an alternative to be a member, I mean, like, in some way to make it more explicit that this, um. That this board is. I don't know, to, to be bringing things to the select board, so like, I, I don't know.
We can do it now, when, just like, when he's on. Just, we could go to the liaison, right, I mean, when I read this, I looked at that as, I kind of came to the conclusion, Jeremy, I understood Jeremy's thinking, I saw the composition, it's hard. I mean, we can do liaison, through participation.
It does require monthly reports for the select board, five monthly reports for the select board, so there's a constant.
Yeah, that's what I said, but I think this is. But I think your approach probably aligns more with what can be going offsite to talk about too, in terms of proper functioning of the operation, that's sort of what I'm meaning from what you're saying. So I'm fine with that, um, because I'm fully comfortable attending and facilitating, you know, you don't have to be in the committee to facilitate a direction.
Right, right, so.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm, I am going to be involved when.
Whether they like it or not.
Are you saying that you might want to be, uh?
No, this is gonna, that's my point, gonna get to a point where we have a recommendation, we don't, not gonna, not.
Exactly, I'm okay with your passion attendant.
Alright, so, uh, I mean, I guess the question is, are we, are we ready to push this forward? Yes.
Yeah, I have one more question, um, Jeremy, did you reach out to the board and all these, to see if they had membership that was interested?
Yeah, um, so I talked to them before they came here, before the committee.
And to put forth.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure that was crystal clear.
And then, um, we didn't include conservation, because the feedback that I had got from conservation, that they'd be happy to be involved whenever a project kind of got to them, but this sort of level of process was not your.
One thing I would like to, so we're, we're posting these rules, I would like to, if we can, possibly be accelerating that to try to bring this, get this live soon and later, because trains leave in the station.
Right, so, right.
There is.
Right, so like, not wait forty five days to. Right, so like not wait 45 days to start.
It's like, I mean. If people are good representatives are coming for, those people that apply first obviously have a desire to see this happen and I think. Um. Yeah, I wanna get a.
Less than three years.
Yeah, get a quorum, let's say quorum, let it go, like, and add to it as we go. Yeah.
Yeah, we can, can update the board on the second, we, our next meeting. If we've had seven applicants, great. If we've had one or two applicants, then. We'll wait till the second meeting in October to. Um, a question off the board on those, this committee and the general bylaws review committee, which we already have vacancies posted for. The process is that the existing board interviews candidates for vacancies on their own board commission. These are new boards and commissions that are going to have candidate, candidates come forward. My suggestion would be that I, I, I don't think we're gonna have 35 candidates for, for four positions, but. My office vet a number of folks and so we don't have to interview everybody here or does this board want to see everybody?
100% yeah, yes, no, they're good.
Before I took people mail on behalf of.
Thank you. Alright, and so, uh, I guess another question is. We're coming up with the, the official name of the town, of the, of the committee. So the suggestion is town land and recreation field committee.
It's such a great name.
It's got a new thing, I don't know. Ain't even proven.
Recreation health, should be. Or recreation fields, I guess it does.
Cause they're encompassed as a band, yeah, active.
Recreational.
I don't know what the max. Does that cover your, your, like?
Well, this, this, well, no, I think, I think, yes and no. I mean, I think the, uh, the town land starts to get there, but I think the focus is on the recreation fields to get moving. We talked about going to land use to do some of these other things.
So do we, I mean, I wonder about like would recreation field committee be more to the point for this?
Just put recreational first.
Because we already have a land use committee.
Recreational fields.
Townland recreational use.
Well. But it's specifically about fields, right? I mean, the, the land use committee, uh, does talk a lot about.
Well, that's where, that's.
Passive recreation.
Files. I'm assuming the committees are gonna come up with the same.
So I mean, I guess, I mean, I just wonder if we could call it a recreation field committee. Um. Because that's going to be the primary goal of this committee?
Well, recreation can't.
A recreation and field?
Yeah, just because I mean, like a disc golf doesn't require a court of field.
Okay, alright, so recreation and field committee, see, well, so that, and there is the potential. Townland, but also potentially working with Upton on, you know, their, their town land as well.
See, this is where I think it gets to the point where. That, that, that has to be done. In anything we do in this space, we can, I mean, we have shared, so.
Right.
Part of me is I'm hoping that the people on this committee understand the needs analysis needs to be done. That, um, we have shared needs with our neighboring, you know, with the school district, with this youth sports team. So I mean, to these natural things that if this committee were not to consider some of these things. We should stop it immediately, you know what I mean?
Right, so I mean, I guess, well, so my proposal is that we. Take the town land out and just leave it.
And style.
I mean, just, I think to keep it shorter to the, like, to, to really reflect the goal. Of getting recreation fields, cause that, I mean, that's sort of how. That's, that was the, the pressing request that I heard from the community.
Are we limiting to town lands?
Uh. No, I mean, not necessarily if there's, if there's a possibility of privately owned lands being used.
Well, within that, I mean, town property, Sweden. Questions.
So, so and that, and that's where like I think, like leaving that out might be, like, we would expect it to be town land, but we wouldn't.
I'd be really careful with scope, if you want to actually execute anything next 18 to 20.
Right, but I mean, but I mean, that's, but the goal, like, if somebody says they're gonna, well, I guess if they donate land, then it becomes town land, but.
Wouldn't that be a demand acquisition?
Yeah.
Acquisition.
Yeah.
So I, I wrote this relative, relative, uh, the first point says, um, action plan relative to town on parcels because that's how the discussion was before that we need to focus on. Actually, this is right now.
Right, okay.
We love town, recreation, and sports field development.
What is Upton calling nurse?
They say whatever Mendon's calling it.
Yeah, right.
Uh, Mike, you made an interesting point about if the, if the existing community doesn't understand that they have to work collaboration. Upton, it's still have to work together. So maybe there should be a point there. Identifying collaboration as, you know, this body in Upton.
Right, I mean, if those interested communities, uh, sorry, engage stakeholders from, from across interested communities, but I think maybe, yeah, it could be going far specific.
Clarifying that it's not necessarily.
Right.
Okay, so rather than we, to post this, to have a charter, um, I think a super motion would be, as in Mendon. To fix my L7 error, um, but, um. More nuanced language on the facilitation, it would be, you know, amendment and then, uh, name change to be consistent across. In terms of motion in the charter. Whatever, set recreation and fields committee or. I just want to be clear, we're settling on as they're determined.
Recreational field committee, so what you guys, uh. Fields committee.
Sorry, Phil, you, you. What's your thought?
I just think you should have a connection to the land that's amended.
Well.
But for the reason, I don't, I don't wanna overlap land use committee, but.
Right.
Analysis that they're gonna be involved in land.
But it doesn't need to be in, I guess my thought is it doesn't necessarily need to be in the name of the committee. Like if it's in the charter.
In a charter.
But just to, to show that it, that is the sort of central, I don't know, that's my, my view.
I'm just asking AI to pump out some committee names for me. So like community charts and field committee, recreation and open spaces, committee land use and recreation committee, wow, they gave land use recreation committee. Uh, recreational development committee, public fields and recreation committee, community land and leisure committee, outdoor spaces recreation.
Yeah. And it's, so Dan's not on there, right? Yeah, okay. Well, so. I mean, I think, again, we just, we need to start it, it needs a name. I can go with whatever, I can go, well, I, I, I'm fine with whatever. I think I was just in favor of shorter.
I agree.
But. Um.
Rack committee.
Well, that's short, okay. That's too short, yeah. Goldie Locks zone here.
Well, that is recreation, field committee is the shortest, most succinct name that doesn't bend anywhere.
Okay. Mike Goddard, is that something, I mean, you've been, like, you're all right with it?
Yeah, I mean, this is focused on fields.
It's focused, yeah.
At, at, active recreation space.
Yeah.
I think the first thing that Phil mentioned around town land, that's the other objective that's probably gonna be somewhere else in terms of. Town of land that use identification over there, so.
Mike Marley, you have, uh, you okay with recreation field committee?
Uh, either, either the word field and land, either town recreation land committee or town recreation field committee. I think you have one that's fine.
You want.
I think the charter is the most important part, the direction of it, yeah, so I think I like that.
Yeah, so you want recreational.
I, I do, I think. Granted, right?
Well, so like recreation field is a, is a compound and recreational field is an adjective and then now, so, you know.
Well, yes.
Uh, yeah, so. I think they're both, they're both correct. So, yeah.
I almost forgot to call it. I am, well, I said.
Yeah, what, what is the?
I like, you know, yeah, so, yeah.
You.
So, yeah. Well.
Let's make sure those range mark.
Alright, so Jeremy, what's your thought on the name? Cause you're gonna post this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you can weigh in.
Recreation is a more consistent name across municipalities. There's a recreation department, there is recreation committees.
Okay, and, and keeping field because that's sort of, okay.
Right, because we're not, we're not talking recreation, meaning, which means.
Right, so, right, so. I guess recreation field committee, I think, has sort of gotten the most traction. Alright, so then I would be looking for a motion.
Um, so I, sorry, if I can caution on the motion language, there's a lot, there's a lot of, uh, language in here which may. Um, contradict a little bit with the charter that we actually, you know, the actual language in the charter, so a much shorter motion, I think, is sufficient here.
So can you say it and someone can say?
Yeah, certainly. So move to approve the recreation field committee charter as present, or as amended. And approve vacancies for said committee. So don't mind my motion.
Okay, I got a motion and then, sorry.
A second.
Okay, I think, okay, great, uh, any further discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you all. Very exciting that we're moving forward with this, or I guess we're going to get other people to move forward with this, but that's progress. Um, okay, so then. Uh. Oh, and that, that included post on the, yes, right, excellent, okay. So, um, next up then is review number 13, review and consider appointments, uh, contingent on leading ethics training if applicable. Um, so first off is economic development committee. Um.
You want these separately each one?
So we can do A, I had sent him, um, a note, uh, we're gonna pass over B, um, but we can do, uh, A and C as one motion, should you like. Um, to contextualize it, uh, Falcon interviewed with, um, the economic development committee, uh, and they favorably recommended his appointment. Uh, it's in the, in the pack as well. And then, um, Frank Nero, um, this is one of the ones where, uh, he was suggested by the planning board and. And Mazor, I believe, for the zoning bylaw review committee, and we didn't have confirmation that Frank actually wanted to be part of the zoning bylaw review committee, uh, like.
It's always good to have that before you point someone.
Well, so you can come back and revisit and identify somebody on my date and see if this is what we want.
Great, so I guess we could, the motion could potentially be combined for those two?
So I, I would move to appoint Dogan Patel to a vacant three year term. To the economic development committee to expire June 30th, 2027. And to appoint Frank Nero to zoning bylaw committee to expire June 30th.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for giving us your time, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. By the way, I haven't been saying all opposed, you know, if any, I, I'm hearing everybody's voice, but if anybody needs me to, uh, speak up and, uh. But, uh, cause I'm, I believe that I'm hearing everybody's eyes, so.
Feel like you'd hear our opposition as well.
Right. I think I would hear it in the discussion. Um, so, uh, alright, so then, uh, on to 14, which. Okay, so, uh, the master plan implementation committee discussion. Um, so I guess I'll, I'll start by saying that, you know, Mendon completed its first master plan in 2023. And there are, uh, there was a huge amount of work that went into that and then, and then was awarded. Was given an award about the, uh, planning of, from CMRPC for doing this master plan. And anyhow, there's a lot of good planning in there and then, uh, a lot of work to be done in that and, um. So the, some members of the economic development committee put in a request that we, that the select board. Um, create an implementation committee. Um, so Jeremy, do you have an additional comment on this?
So yeah, uh, it's actually part of the same email that's in your packet. Um, there was two topics touched on on the same email. Um, so I met with Elena, uh, earlier this week, both, I forget. Um, and, you know, we discussed this topic specifically, but was conscious of the master plan was a planning board initiative. Um, and didn't want, we wanted to make sure that the planning board is involved with this, so we had a discussion with the planning board chair. Um, who said, yes, please, full speed ahead, we, so we don't have, I don't have a charter here to vote on. On one of the boards, talk about the, the concept of the master plan implementation committee, uh, who liked to see on it, made sense to be on it. Um, but we just opened it up broadly, um. And so a lot of the same discussions we've just had on the recreation field committee, um, but. At a master plan implementation, but the, my, my takeaway is the planning board is, is ready, willing, and able to be a partner in this group.
But they're deferring because they initially, master plan committee, planning board. Said we are going to create an implementation committee, but they have not, so they're okay with us. They can lead here.
That was my, that was my takeaway.
That was my understanding as well.
They were, they, waiting on slide board to, great.
Interesting.
And then implementation committee would be doing.
So I would.
What differently than planning?
So I would definitely just, this is a. As opposed to recreation field committee where we're trying to find something I think more bespoke to Mendon, this is a committee that exists with most communities that have master plans that they need to implement. Um, so I would look to other communities to take a charter and present this here.
But, my, my concern with this is you've got, and I've said this in other meetings, you've got implementation plans in just about every document that's come out. Master plan, housing production plan, land use, they all have these grids, it's great, it's stuff to do. Where, where we've started, some committees that already exist should be the engine that executes against their plan to some extent. I think we've just created a recreational field committee that actually is going to address many things in the master plan. So I think coordination will be the biggest challenge. And I'd be curious. What this committee's gonna do if it was like, be more about oversight, overall execution, more steering committee than acting, I guess. But I think you got a real, uh. You got a real challenge around how does all, how does stuff get integrated from execution? I mean, for, it's easy to create the plan in some respects, the execution, where you've got. Uh, different bodies trying to execute similar, but where there's overlapping, that's gonna be a bigger challenge.
Some of the things require votes by the town.
Yeah, so.
Implementation is a little challenging.
So I'm, I'm, I'm curious to see a charter for a committee like this, happy to look at it, but I think this is, this feels different than.
Anything else we've done.
Yeah, it's different than the senior center, community center committee, it's different than recreational.
Cause some of the, some of the suggestions of the, or requests of this master plan committee are. Pretty, pretty simple, other ones very involved, there's a fair amount of funding and process.
And there's different means to an end, so even we think about some of the stuff we'll be talking about, workshop. Some of those things be a means to an end to address some of the things in the master plan, right? So that, that, that. It's easy to say create to me to, to execute it.
Well, I mean, one thing I can imagine is a master plan committee would actually do periodic check-ins to say like, where are we with respect to these goals? Who is working on it, what has been done? And like having that.
So governance. Type of thing.
Right, well, but they, I mean, potentially, right, like an advisory committee, like. You know, in, a committee in a position to communicate with the other committees that are working on all these different roles. So like, cause it, like, to some extent, you know, it's us tying it together, but, you know, we, it's too big for us to go through. I mean, like, the master plan is a big document, big, living document. So, I'm in favor of it.
This is different aspects.
Right, right.
Some of it, some of it is policy.
Right.
Some of it is actually, you know, maybe an execution.
And I, I mean, I am, I think it's great that the economic development committee has really has pushed for this, cause I think that suggests that maybe there are members there that have ideas about like. Pushing forward some of the goals related to economic development in the master plan. I might be like connecting the dots, but like, um.
But, but it's interesting because if there's economic, economic development opportunities in the master plan, I would expect that committee to run with it full bore. Not look for an implementation committee to do economic.
Well, right.
So like, it, it. You, you potentially. you, you potentially have to make an overly great bureaucracy that's unmanageable with this type of approach of committees over committees over committees. It's just a matter of, no. It's, I'm not saying we don't do it, curious to see a charter. But, you know, for somebody to say, we need an implementation committee and leave it at that, it's got more to that, especially that initiate, we're initiating action in so many places. It's, it's.
It would be.
We'll see what it needs to be, I guess.
I guess it would be interesting to know, like, how, how it's gone with other towns and whether we have, whether there are any towns that we could look to as a whole model about how they've had success with this committee.
Like authority delegation or like steering delegation, how's that handled?
So one of my first contacts will be to CMRPC, say you've done this in other communities.
Yeah.
You've done implementation. I'm sure they have best practices. Well, actually, what I'm sure they're gonna say is it depends on your community.
The biggest barrier.
What's that?
Biggest barrier we're going to have is.
Right.
Yeah. I'm very fond of saying you can do anything, but you can't do everything, so, yeah.
Right, where you get to the water and sewer part of master plan. Nobody's depending anything on this.
You know, some of the consequences of having water and sewer. Every versus selective which I can discuss.
That sounds like, I mean, we, we're not going to vote yet.
Yeah.
So this is really just to test the water about whether the committee is open to, like, or whether the select board is open to the creation of this committee and then like pending additional research into charter issues by other towns.
Is there any benefit for this committee to actually review the master plan? Have you all seen it?
I believe in, I'm not even convinced that, you know, having a discussion about implementation committee is, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking we're talking about master plan implementation. I'm thinking the board will implement it and then we create, we create committees for task forces if you vote.
As we just did.
Right.
Right.
It's not so.
Right.
I mean, like.
Because I'm not sure, I'm not convinced that another committee, you know, to
Right.
I don't think we need that.
I think we need, what's the need, so like, do we need guidance, do we need program management? What do we need to to bring that to life?
I think some of the different aspects of that can be as simple as us to delegate the highway survey or the, or the town administrator.
Right, say the TA.
Yeah, TA, TA.
So, yeah, Jeremy.
But, you know, that's what, how much, but how much, how much time does that save on bureaucracy that save? Rather than having a committee to discuss it, who wants to say, you know what, we need.
Right.
That's what.
Yeah, okay. Jeremy was gonna say something else, though.
I was gonna say something along those lines, like what I'm gathering from this is that there are committees that have small varying size pieces to implementation. And what they need is a coordinated, because lots, lots of this, lots of implementation of the master plan is going to happen and it's not going to be called implementation of the master plan. It's going to be, you know, as, um, at force.
It's happening.
Yeah.
There's many things in the master plan that's actually moving forward.
Yep.
Right.
And.
In an uncoordinated fashion. Well, well, no, they're, they're, they're doing, they're doing your job.
Depending on.
Right, yes.
So we haven't, we haven't discussed goal setting before the board itself, but I think this is a great opportunity to talk broadly in that, you know, one fiscal twenty twenty-five goal is, you know, began implementation of master plan across departments and committees. And that's something I can, you know, it's not gonna be ten hours a week that I'm doing stuff like that, but making sure I'm abreast in the board is the efforts.
Even that document that would be prioritized in this, in this Collins, Collins Center study on process is some of the implementation of the, of the master plan.
How do we measure ourselves against the master plan? Like, I mean, I know the master plan tells us how to do that, but are we measuring it? So like, we're doing these things, are we going back and checking our master plan boxes and saying we're twenty percent of our master plan?
Right, I mean, like, we.
You're gonna experiment, you know?
We never have.
No.
So I mean, I guess I, so it sounds like not everybody is in favor of, of a new committee. But like, I guess I would still be interested in at least looking to see what the implementation committees do in other communities and see if.
If they, if they have some.
Right. See what they do.
Or giving direction.
Right, see if there. If there are tasks in that charter that we don't necessarily need to adopt a whole committee, but we could maybe co-opt things from such a charter and say like, hey, maybe this could be done by this committee that's already in existence or by the TA or by us, so, but I think, I think seeing how it's done in other towns, I think it would still be useful.
That would be useful, I think, I think what I'm hearing is we're all probably in favor of somehow we want to get traction on actioning the town against the master plan committee, how do we do that? Or the master plan, it could be a committee, it could be select board prioritization of who should go after first. The master plan itself has accountable parties associated with each owns each of those items down the committee. So I mean, there's a lot of stuff that's there. I think, right, I wanna, I like the idea of moving forward so we can actually articulate to the town that we have a master plan and here's some of the things that have been against it, those roll into our annual objectives or potentially things like that.
These bylaw, these bylaw committees and, and recreational fields are, those are parts of that master.
So and so is the, the senior.
Housing production.
Housing production.
And we're, we're moving forward.
Right, so.
In the housing piece, though, we talked, always talked about the linkage between what we're talking about in housing production, how it ties back to master plans. If nothing else, this committee and or this effort should be able to allow the townspeople to see how all the stuff we're doing or funding, et cetera, tie back to the broader planning.
It would be like, I would love to have some sort of presentation like about the master plan and, you know, it, it would be really useful, I think, to present to the public. There is this, the document online, but I think it would be really useful to have some sort of, you know, public distilled version of it and say like, you know, like here's where we are, here, here's what we're working on. And so that would be the sort of thing that, you know, an implementation committee could potentially.
Workshop should actually pull that in.
Right, but I guess. Right, and but it's always, it's, I guess it comes down to who's going to do the work. And that's, I guess, where maybe when we will have a follow-up discussion about this after we've seen how other towns are doing the work and then we could decide.
I'd like to keep this on as an agenda topic.
Yeah.
Similar to the call, so we don't cite of it, things like that, because I think we don't know what we don't know.
Right.
But I feel like there's enough energy on the idea of doing something to continue the discussion, figure out how we
Right.
Move from plan to action within the confines of our town operations and committees. And it could be a new committee.
Right, right, yeah, it could be, but not necessarily. And I think we don't have enough information tonight to decide. I'm still open to a committee, but I think it feels like we've created a lot of committees recently and so we may, I'm worried that we're, we may tap out our community.
But I do think it's interesting that every one of those committees, actually, their their, their goals and their direction actually goes towards completing some of the aspects of the master plan.
Definitely, right.
It's already.
Right, but I guess I, if there's nobody looking at the master plan as a whole and seeing which parts are being left out because there isn't an active committee working on that plan.
But I think, but I think, I don't think I need a committee, because I, I agree with Jason. What we don't do, don't, we don't have a lot of measurable goals and objectives within what we do, whether it's the day-to-day operations or even projects like this, so how do we measure success? Now, if we talk about goals and objectives for the select board, like in subsequent office, that's what I'm gonna be mentioning. I mean, I want, I want, yeah, financial reporting, I want updates, speeding lagging indicators, things like that, program level statistics, and we understand we can demonstrate empirically, we are actually moving, we're making progress against the things we told you we're gonna do. But I think, I won't say that, that's huge.
Yeah, that's the whole demonstration, we're capable of following through on the banks that, that town law.
Right.
One of the notes from the implementation section of the master plan says, ensure all municipal staff, commissions, committees, and boards understand their role in the implementation of goals in the master plan. So it's incumbent upon my office, really, to get everybody pulling on the same word and saying this is our master plan. That's something I haven't focused on, so we'll, we'll make it up.
You're in there for a terrible long. But, but, but I ask a question, so not everything can be done at once. I'm assuming since I think that people have deferred to us to any implementation committee, so prioritizing what gets done when with the broader scope of the town is probably gonna lie within this board. So then the, the bodies and the committees that you're coordinating, understand which ones are we going after when, is that fair?
Yeah, yeah, because you don't want just people doing whatever they want and me telling you these people are doing whatever.
It's the same ask that they'll have, basically, like, people wanna know what else we're doing in general, right? And that's about money, but this is about.
It was a posting on Facebook that talked about why don't they call up the senior center and everybody is. And I, I think it goes back to the, to the question that, you know, there is a plan that our reasons for all of these for the, for why we do things, what we do. And this, I think that this could go towards helping inform people and understand that there is a plan.
And frankly, for a long time, we didn't have a plan, we were just trying to get by. You know?
All right, so I guess Jeremy, you have a little homework.
Yeah.
So you'll maybe, I think, still checking in with CMRPC and maybe.
Yeah, that's gonna be.
Yeah, so, okay, and so we'll, we'll bring this back to our discussion and then maybe, maybe it'll be in our, when we get to goal-setting retreat, which we haven't scheduled yet. Like, this might be a topic that comes up then, like. But, yeah.
The master plan informs our goals.
It's a good thought, yeah, I mean, yes. Yes. But anyhow, yeah, I think, I think keeping the master plan, something about it on upcoming agendas as to Mike Goddard's point, like, I think that would be helpful. As we move on.
Twenty minutes?
What's that?
That's just the time, so.
Oh, oh, yeah. Uh, yeah. Yeah, so it's getting late. So we have on here select board policies and procedures, comments and discussion. I don't know that any of us have it in us to do a full twenty minutes on this.
Yeah.
I think maybe that we should, like, check in and like, I, I don't know, Jeremy, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, so we've had this agenda item on here for a while, so I, you talked about slicing it, so I took the first eight pages, took the notes that were here and made my comments on the dozen or so comments that were here, whether we want, so you're right, I'm conscious of the time and the number of items we still have on our agenda. I know that none of them, very few of these are going to be very second, yes, incorporate sorts of stuff.
Do you, does it make sense to work with maybe, you know, just myself or a reduced number of us to come in and cooperate and present something more rather than put piece by piece?
Yeah, and I think, I think if you and I have a, have a hour teams meeting and go through, I think, I'll be good to do it.
Yeah, sounds great.
Of, of these, probably forty percent of my notes were, yeah, that's a good suggestion, incorporated. And other ones were, you know, it's unclear to me what's going on, so a little discussion, but I think, I think to sit down an hour, incorporate and say vote up or down once we get to the end.
Yeah.
That sounds good, any other comments about that?
That's how Brendan and I did it at the beginning. So, yeah, I feel like that's almost the only way to kind of get through some of the stumbling blocks, you know, you could vote on.
Sounds good, I will say, next on my kind of policy piece, both the financial management policies and the personnel policies. Personnel policies prioritized for me. My anticipation is to give a red line copy to the select board, you know, well in advance of any discussion at, at the meeting. But looking, you know, for, because I feel like I'm driving that process a little bit more, I think I can just combine feedback from everybody in my office and it not be something here. I can present a, you know, second red line copy to be voted up or down. That's.
A lot of that, a lot of that personnel policy discussion was already agreed on, it was just.
So I, I have like the two thousand, like, nine or two thousand thirteen version, whatever it is, and then there is a per-document red line version, but exactly what you said, it was what it meant. So I wanted to go back to the last implemented piece, just because to show you the changes of what you voted on last versus what, what I'm.
All right, so I think it sounds like there was a plan there. So item sixteen is the special town meeting article discussion.
Yeah, so Katie's creating the draft from the ongoing list and wants kind of the warrant, warrant, close it, once we close the warrant, board can sit and do the, the draft draft warrant articles, but right now we don't have a discussion for the town specific. And we have placeholders, thanks, of course, but.
Remind me again when we're close.
October seventeenth, Thursday.
And who has the continuing to the financial, what the was filed behind this paper, do you know?
Can you, do you have the draft?
Right, there was a two.
There's two from the assessors office, one from the town clerk accepting an MGL that would allow members to participate in a continued public hearing if they attest that they watched or read the minutes of, if they'd missed the first part of a hearing and they watched or read the minutes of.
Where's the binding, what's the, where are the assessors applying?
The assessors, they actually submitted another one.
Oh, there was a third one, okay.
The, the first one is increasing a level of the veterans abatement, I believe. They're both because of changes in MGL that allow us to do them.
It says to see if the town will accept or deny MGL which applies to taxpayer who otherwise qualifies for exemption pursuant any clause specifically listed on section five, chapter, shall be granted additional exemption shall be uniform for all exemption in the, the exemption.
That's from MGL.
Yes.
No, the exemption and not change to a number of years and the board of assessors provides some layperson commentary to it as well. And then we should expect, we should expect one from the town clerk on her salary as well, since the number voted at annual town meeting was not what was.
No, it wasn't what it was supposed to be. I just wanted, that should actually come from us. Yes, I don't expect the town clerk to submit that.
No, that's.
Right.
I, I agree with my, I'm discussing, like, I promised her that, because that was supposed to happen and it didn't. So that's kind of.
There's a number of financials that you probably make sure we got covered coming out of the last budget session. So I'm assuming you've got Jody's notes, things like that. We can, we can circle back on that if you want. And then if we want to, we had zoning, the ARMU, possibly on TAF Orchard, that did not make the spring, we talked about it.
Right.
How would you recommend, are we going through jack to bring that back, see if the planning board learns about it, because that would want to sponsor it if they don't?
Yeah, my, yeah, my difference would be to, for zoning, or to originate the planning board.
Right, so how do we get that?
Thing has to.
I mean, I've, I've kind of sent an email, so.
I know.
I just want to, I want to get that out there, because I think it's.
I'll bring it up next, during the next meeting.
It just, I mean, it ties back to sort of the broader development on the corner along the senior center, where you start to see economic opportunity built in with a expenditure, expenditure like a new senior center, community center.
Well, the senior center needs to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We wait for the committee.
Which I thought was important.
Yeah, there's a placeholder for some transfers, like, there was a, you know, insurance number that wasn't funded fully. We had to take from miscellaneous sorts of expenses, so we didn't. So I have the coverage, um so we'll have to back fund that.
We also have to make sure that we take. You know, free cash and making available so that we can, we can move it around times like so many.
Yep, so uh our submission should be finished um in next week at some point, it's at the end of September, um and then certification by probably, you know, three weeks after that. But I'm I'm in pretty constant contact with the county.
And then.
I was just gonna say also that we expect some uh warrant articles from.
Especially on the accessory.
Yeah, that's the must, that's the one I'm really trying to get, you know, into.
And that, one other um uh potential article that's come to my attention was also from the town clerk, which was a uh suggestion of moving the annual town meeting. They from Friday, which uh like conflicts with some religious disturbances, um so uh.
Yes, the bylaw, yes.
Exactly, so it it would, it would, it would be a bylaw change, so, but Friday night, um so that the suggestion would be to move it to a different weeknight. Um, so we'll have a chance to discuss that more, but just so that's on your radars.
And then increase turnout.
We might.
And we've already started with just removing the requirement of being behind this specific night.
Right.
If you miss a flexibility, like we have.
For the special town meeting, right, so that's, and I know we are, we we do have this general bylaw review. Uh committee started and, but it strikes me that that committee will not be really in a position to put forward any bylaw changes by the special town meeting. So it's, it's a question, so since this would be a bylaw change, but it is, um you know, it it does affect individuals who are, you know, practice. Religion, like Judaism in particular, Friday night, so.
Just, I'm just not, I'm I'm remembering something about bylaw changes having to be worked on and add in something.
Uh, so I'll, we can discuss it more with the town clerk, I think, I don't know if it needs to be, and right, right, whether it needs to be, I, well, like, we're talking about zoning bylaws. Coming up on the special town meeting, so, yeah, so that is a good question.
Also, if we have any historical information as to why we put it on Friday.
I guess that would be a good, good, good information.
At some point in time, somebody decided to put it on Friday, then.
Right, I know, I I've heard.
Because that was the best night.
I've heard other complaints, and like it often can leave with like um like games and and like school, like concerts and that sort of thing, so like.
I, I mean, I don't know that we're gonna find a good night.
Right, that's, there, there, there may not be a one good night, but it would be good.
Yeah, but but I was told part of it was because typically people marry late and people didn't have to get up for work the next day.
Unless you do.
Right, but you're asking for.
Although they, things have gotten a lot faster with the clickers, right? They like so much faster, I think it like shaves an hour off easily, the typical meeting.
Well, it influenced the town moderator to accelerate the whole town meeting, if that's, that's.
Alright, so that.
I recently talked to our town council, who expects the native town meeting to go six nights. So um one late night meeting.
Wow, and that's probably not six Fridays.
It's Tuesdays and Thursdays for three straight weeks.
Wow. So when people complain about our long town meetings.
We're going right to go to three.
Fine, okay, any other uh. Uh, are there special town meeting articles, okay, so yeah, well, that will be on our next, I expect that will be on our next agenda as well. And then, uh, alright, so uh number nineteen, like let me know if I've missed anything, but it looks like a vote to authorize the lines to use the town field for country fair parking. That is a short one.
So.
On October thirtieth.
Uh, so amended.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, alright, all in favor? Alright, thank you. Um, we got twenty, uh twenty-one should also be fairly straightforward. Uh, Jeremy, can you tell us about this?
Yeah, so I sent a memo um from the town clerk um on early voting hours, uh we are required to um have early voting hours at least one day per weekend, at least two hours each day we're open, and at least four hours total each weekend. Based upon our number of registered voters, um so her uh proposed, and um for weekdays, at least twenty-five percent of the registered business hours. Um, the same as we talked about during the state primary, um since the onset of no excuse vote by mail has been a marked decrease in in-person early voting, um so we, uh these hours um are um. Adhering to the minimum to which we're required, but not staffing any more than we have to, incurring that cost. The town clerk said in her memo that um it used, there was a high of eight voters per hour before the uh no excuse vote by mail, and now it's down to averaging two votes per hour, two voters per hour. In the state primary in September, you will get less than one person per hour. Um, so uh we are not restricting access to voting by any means by just adhering to the memo, uh no excuse vote by mail has kind of changed the nature of elections.
So there's a motion to approve the recommendations as written in the, in the town clerk's memo or email of September sixteenth. For a number of votes from zero to four thousand voters.
Yes, I can read the hours just because they're not listed in the um in the agenda and this memo wasn't circulated, so the hours are on Saturday, October nineteenth, nine to one. Uh, Monday, October twenty-first through Thursday, October twenty-fourth, ten to one. Saturday, October twenty-sixth, nine to one, Monday, October twenty-eighth through October thirty, Thursday, October thirty-first, ten to one. That's the extent of the hours.
So.
Alright. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I'm not.
Good, thank you. Alright, uh twenty-two is ARPA discussion, and that's something that I uh like, we, we are approaching the end of the calendar year where we need to have the funds committed. And so I just, I wanted to make sure that we were discussing this in our, you know, public meetings, so um maybe get an update from.
We have a meeting on Capitol next week.
It's Wednesday.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Um, so a meeting on Capitol Thursday, um to, you know, have a better sense of it there.
Okay.
One interesting thing I heard at the conference today, which I was going to bring up later, we're talking about small victories, talking about workplace culture, talking about, you know, retention of employees, something like that. And the town of Medfield used a few hundred dollars, maybe a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, I mean, um to purchase um swag. So town of Medfield branded sweaters, polos, whatever, picked four things, sent it out to staff and said, pick one, everyone gets one of these. Maybe use ARPA funds to purchase town branded stuff for staff. That was a great idea.
That's, yes, that's a great.
And as the sheriff's office, we bought our own, but everybody loves wearing sheriff's office branded polos and sweaters and pullovers. It was uh at the end of the other sheriff, they won covers, that sort of thing, so I think it's a low cost, great morality of, I would wear.
I agree that, that that came up at the the beach event this year. Well, if can, people had come up and kicked around these ideas, so.
I think along with that, I think it would be appropriate to have some type of pin made for elected officials.
Like an enamel pin?
Yeah. We would also do, the sheriff's office, years of service pin, so once you got to ten years of service, fifteen years of service, so low cost.
I want mine to be top ground.
Alright, so.
Along with your husband, having a big solar battery.
Alright.
And we'll lay on that.
To that, that same end, we're also, Katie and I are also exploring um the most cost effective way to get uh IDs created for folks to, um so especially folks who are in the field. We have our conservation agent, our highway surveyor, if I'm walking around doing something that I have a wandier on ID that says I'm a town clerk. Really low cost, but really visible.
I thought we were making fadits a public place.
We have a comfortable place, but you know, we might want to look again if we're gonna do this to actually buy them a piece of a.
That's what we're looking at.
In this way, yeah, so we can actually do that in presence.
Yeah, Katie's done some nice work, so we're gonna pull the trigger on what we just.
Awesome.
Alright, so I guess for the ARPA discussion, really it's uh, right, we're coming up on the end of the calendar year, but we'll get an update from the capital planning working group about uh some recommendations and hopefully. I mean, because we'll need to vote on the use of these funds soon in time for the funds to be like contracted and become, so it's really just. Making sure that we as a board have not, haven't lost sight of this, um but I know like there's people working on it specifically, um but I hope, yeah. I look forward to those updates next meeting. Other topics not reasonably anticipated, fourteen hours before the meeting? Hey, uh, yeah, old business, I'm not sure, I think old business just will roll into the. Did you have any old business? I mean, so town administrator report, I think that will bring up some ongoing business.
Um, alright, so town administrator report, um first of all, uh wanted to give, I think the board's aware, we want to make sure the community was aware, um. All but one of our collective bargaining agreements have been settled, um we are in mediation with the highway department, so um the town is going through all of its legal obligations and um. You know, preparation with our labor council, but we have mediation in October, um we're hopeful we can come to a a agreeable resolution um that fits uh our needs, our. You know, treats our employees right and um fits in with the collective bargaining agreements have already been, already been settled. So that's ongoing. Um, community compact grant, um community compact has best practices grants, um that opened up um at the end of August. Um, I'm getting quotes on two right now, or I'm get, working on scope and getting quotes from vendors, so I can use that to apply to the grant to do a compensation classification study through community compact. And to do um an ADA self evaluation and transition plan. Town's last one was done in two thousand twelve, um the last um SETP that I did in Attleboro um was something like four hundred pages long, you know, two photos and. Cost estimates and two, you know, two days to even send an email, frankly, um it's, so the town's here is, I think it's like twenty-seven pages long and, you know, we've made a lot of changes in the last twelve years. So to be part of a housing choice community, which opens up up to a number of grant opportunities, we need to commit in the next five years, do an ADA self evaluation and transition plan. So I'm using grant funding to do that, made a lot of sense to me. Back into that, I talked to our ADA coordinator, um who was interested in stepping down from that role, um and I think um in a lot of communities, the building commissioner um is the ADA coordinator. I like to think of accessibility in a broader sense of just a built environment, thinking about making sure folks can hear us in this meeting, making sure they can access our website and the readability of that. Navigate permits, that kind of thing, so um it'd be my recommendation, I'll put something together after I actually meet face to face with our chairman, uh but about naming the ADA coordinators to centralize everything. Leave that up to discussion, but this is my recommendation. Um, also on the community compact grant, um I recently closed out a two thousand, or an FY twenty-four fire grant, and FY, working on closing out an FY twenty-three highway. Uh, we're rolling out um the final SharePoint migrations um on September thirty, Monday, September thirtieth, um so right now we have everything, we're. Beating multiple camps on whether folks are using SharePoint or local servers, so the communication strategy, I've worked world band, you have screenshots and clicks and how tos. Um, so we'll be moving to SharePoint um as a town line on the thirtieth. Uh, we talked about the um capital conversation with the um regional school district, they uh didn't write the notes down, I probably wronged the book, but um in, they expected termination in October about. Our, an update in October about their eligibility in NSBA's roof project, um so they have some capital meetings to make sure the kids are shared here, I plan on attending some of those, uh but there is a. Um, an anticipated need for a roof project at. Um, Old Sod Box Road, uh the Lowell family property that we've been talking about, I've done a lot of work on the backend, um Dan Byer's done some great research on the registry. Katie's talked to the registry, we've communicated that to town council, who is working with um their uh title folks, they're trying to find it, there's another procedure called ANR. Uh, that I'm not familiar with, but ANasar is, and so we're moving, so we don't have a resolution right now, but we, this is a constant thing that that's on our radar. Another kind of constant slow burn is um town hall punch list items. For the town hall renovation project, um we have thirty-eight thousand dollars remaining in the fund to do things like um. Seating outside where it's aggressive, so some smaller painting touch-ups, some lighting, some signage, sorts of things. It's not enough to pay for HVAC in this room.
Jeremy, the funny part is that the R, the money that's allocated.
Yeah, it's, it's already in, uh sitting in its own fund, um it's already been allocated.
It's left over.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so it's good, because there is a punch list, twenty to twenty-five thousand from ARPA that is available, we voted on too, so.
Okay, I'll make sure that it's.
I know we had talked about this.
Sixty-three of ceiling and saying. Okay. Yeah, because the way this project was prepared, there isn't a, a punch list in a traditional sense that you would expect from a capital project, um so we're trying to.
Sure.
Yeah, that was just down. Um, a reminder on the twenty-eighth, we have our call center facilitated retreat, um police station uh from nine to one, uh Katie and I were both in attendance. Um, working on uh some website updates in the accessibility realm, so right now, uh our website, um the structure of our website is used, uses an open source. Of Drupal, um through a vendor called ClearGov, ClearGov has their own proprietary product called Central, so if you look at Upton, Bellingham. Data, Brooklyn, Albra, they all have ClearGov's central product, it is a, uh it'd be a total, you know, reprostitution of our website. In that, we bring a library onboard, I talked to the library director, he said yes please, um to go from their WordPress site um to going under our umbrella, but then still maintaining, you know. Entire control, it would, it would look similar, but not exactly the same, um it would have more separate distinction than say my page would, uh but it would be under the same branding. The implementation for year one is in the thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar range, um as they migrate everything over and and spend time training and all that, uh but then on a yearly basis, it's in the seven thousand dollar range. The proposal we're getting from, back from um Civic Plus is kind of a comparative thing, you know, what if we do this, what if we do this, what's our contract now? Uh, so we can present, be like, this is the actual additive cost of doing this, um and ARPA funds are a great use to, you know, one-time expense that we're going to see this calendar year. Um, and definitely thirty percent of this calendar year and should we go forward in the rest of it this fiscal year, um that can be more on ten too.
That's so. We just recently met with them again, because we've kind of been pushing them off for a while, but the um, I think the two biggest things that will come out of this are, are search. And ADA compliance, like those are the solid two big things that people need, so, and then uh minutes and and agendas that would be well organized and go back quite sometimes. Then people can go and get access.
And not only that, on the back. If you ask for support, then buy our new product instead.
So like.
And and because the backend isn't super user friendly, and it's, so Dan knows how to do it, and Dan can do the thing in ten seconds, you know, Dan can. But Dan hasn't taken time to teach people how to fish, because it's just, you know, it's easier for him to do it initially, but um then putting that on him is also unfair operationally, not how we should be operating, so. It's my expectation or interpretation of that it's much more user friendly to navigate.
That's what it seems like, yeah, so we should be here, but maybe it's October.
Yeah, awesome. Uh, last two things, uh one, I did an MMMA, which is Mass Municipal Managers Association Bootcamp today. First of all, Sharon has a community and senior center, it's gorgeous, um it's kind of, you know, you saw members of all ages from the community there, there was pickball courts and. And bocce ball, and you know, the recreation department was tied into it, and you know, there's this massive kind of bank. and bocce ball, and, you know, there, the recreation department was tied into it, and, you know, there's this massive kind of banquet style room that they got to host this sort of thing, right? That the MMA paid them their fee to be able to use the municipal building, um, and it really kind of showed what a community center can, frankly, could, you know, I would say should, but can, can be. Um, the bootcamp itself was awesome, focused on, um, when I go to conferences like this, I like to come back and let you know what it is that you you didn't actually pay for this, but, um, folks on collective bargaining, um, so had folks who have done, you know, really big communities and their best practices on collective bargaining, had labor council there to talk about, you know, some do's and don'ts, um, and then had some folks talk through their career in public service and had roundtables with, uh, more experienced town administrators, it was geared towards folks who either want to be town administrators or are moved town administrators. Um, so I thought the conversation is great, um, made a couple of connections in, in Worcester County area, um, that may be more useful for them than me in the short term, but, you know, it's, um, you never know who you're going to, you know, rely on and get success from in the future. Um, and then related to that, um, ICMA, the International City and County Management Association, I'm going to that conference this weekend and next week, so I return Wednesday, um, so I'll be out of the office Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, um, just by the nature of these jobs, like, of course, available for stuff, but I'm just not going to be in the office, um, on the Tuesday, Wednesday. Um, it's in Pittsburgh, and I'll do one of these same readouts when I get back, but it'll be much larger as a, as a four day conference. Um, and that's, that's it, we.
Thank you. Alright, um, so, uh, item twenty-six is future agenda topics, I know we talked about several on the way that we were going to bring back, you know, about ARPA, talk about master plan, um, are there other, other things that people want to get, make sure we get, um, on an agenda soon? You can always, like, email is, emailing Jeremy and, and PD also works, but if you have any that you're thinking of now that you want to signal.
Through capital updates sometime in October.
Okay, capital update. Okay. Alright, and I'm sure there will be more that will come to us, uh.
I feel like we're going to be busy.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Right. Alright, and then.
Is there, is there any thought, I'm just throwing it out there, if we think that we're going to have alternate meetings that go late, for us to be weekly rather than bi-weekly?
I mean, we did that, we.
For less period.
We did, we did that in the spring, I guess maybe we can see, maybe with the upcoming agendas, if they start getting really, I don't know, we, we could certainly see.
I'm just.
I know not, I know not everybody's available those alternate Wednesdays.
Add it up and it goes up three hours.
Yeah. I think that's a good point, like, tonight, it's, things, things kind of get added on, you have it on.
Right, that is what it is.
Some, some of them, right, some of them we, like, needed to have, and, you know, we've kept some of the others short, but yeah, it is, it is late and we're not done yet. Um.
To that, I, I heard somebody at this conference today say, you know, talking about being able to balance the demands in the job and personal life, and she goes, there are times that I carve up with, she goes, but I know every other Tuesday, you know, slideboard starts at seven, executive session starts at six. I'm like, that's a great idea, if, you know, we're going to have an executive session that you want, that you want to time, yeah, to be the executive session first, we can, um, if we can do six to six-thirty and then.
I think, I think that runs into people's, like, work schedules, I know when we tried to start meetings earlier, it, uh, it's.
Even doing a meeting six-thirty, this, so, we, some.
See, the front door of the executive session.
Right, yeah, and then you know your time limit.
Yeah.
That's good. Is that why? You have to stop at the meeting opening time?
Yeah, it, um, different communities have different needs, so perhaps there's lots of executive session stuff that, you know, Warren has to deal with, that we, to watch the time, but I, I thought it was an interesting, uh, approach to.
And I guess, yeah, Mike, to your point, it could be that leading up to the election and the town meeting, we may need another meeting or two, just to handle some of, some of this, I know, well, there is going to be the, um, the information session for the senior community center, which, but that, that would be specifically on that topic, if, if that ends up being like a joint meeting, so, um, but, uh, yeah, we may want to consider adding another Wednesday in, like, maybe not every week, but like, maybe three times in a month. Yeah, so maybe that would be probably a good time to consider, so instead of having that extra week off.
We're going to allow the agenda to drive the fruits.
Right, that, yeah, that's what I think, if, if we get, uh, but sometimes we don't know, but I guess if we start, things get piled on, we can see about adding, see what could wait in as a week and then schedule.
Yeah, exactly, not everything has to be done.
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, and, and in the spring, we did, oh, we, right, we were, we did weekly.
Those were awesome, like, four hour.
And not being that way, you know, right, so. But yeah, yeah, good, good suggestion, alright, um, so our next, uh, regular scheduled meeting is October second, but we. Ninth of.
Meeting.
But we also have the, um, the retreat on September twenty-eighth, which we also mentioned, um.
Yes, thank you for everyone presenting those words, she's back.
Yeah, okay, great. Yeah, looking forward to that discussion. Um, actually, just on the topic of meetings, I mean, we still need to schedule our goal setting meeting, I guess, we'll talk about that later. Um, alright, so then, um, last, I miss.
Those are possible, I think that's all.
Okay, uh, so, uh, executive session, so, um, reason number two, to conduct, oh, sorry, executive session, Mass General Law Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-One A, reason number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Uh, and the board will not convene an open session, uh, I guess I will do this as a motion. I move, uh, to enter executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-One A, reason number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, contract negotiation with non-union personnel, the board will not convene an open session and will adjourn directly from the executive session.
Second.
Alright, so, uh, roll call vote, Brugge's eye.
Chanel eye.
I'm the.
Cooter, I. Raleigh.
So we will enter executive second, and I think we, so it is at, what, nine fifty, um, and so I think we will stop the recording. And it looks like the only people who are.